Well, good evening, and I want to welcome board members and other folks in attendance to our special board voting meeting this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started in our meeting this evening, I just want to make a few comments. You know, this is our first in-person board meeting we've had since the onset of the pandemic, so I'm guessing we're going to be a little rusty tonight, so please bear with us. You know, we've attempted to set this meeting up in such a manner as to maintain safety for everybody who's participating. Members of the audience have pre-registered, and we've limited our indoor public attendance to 150. A few of our board members will be participating by phone, as will our solicitor and our meeting transcriber. And in addition, we're live streaming this event on YouTube, so it's accessible to the community. There is no Zoom component to the meeting due to technical difficulties with this venue. If time permits tonight, the first meeting is the special voting meeting. Where among other few items on the agenda, we'll be voting on the learning plan for the second quarter of the school year. We intend to hold our regular October board workshop meeting immediately after this voting meeting, if time permits. I want to recognize, this is the first in-person board meeting for our superintendent, Dr. Kim Minor, so. And our newly hired business manager, Mr. Brian Feig. So, welcome to both of you. We're so thrilled to have you both here. Brian serves as not only our business manager, but our board secretary. Our thanks also this evening to Joe Way, Joe Calamita, the entire IT department for working out the logistics, all the technical elements of this meeting, and for our administrators and other staff who are with us tonight. Finally, just a few words about the public comment period, you know, for this evening. Our Board Policy 903 establishes our procedures for public participation in board meetings. Board meetings allow any resident student or employee an opportunity to make a comment to the board regarding matters of concern, deliberation, or official action of the school board. Policy limits the total time for comments to 30 minutes, and each individual is limited to four minutes. But in consideration of the interest in the main subject this evening, our desire is to hear from the community, so we're going to be asking the board to address that issue of both the time and the duration of the comments to allow sufficient public participation. Before we get started, at this point, I'd like to ask our board secretary to conduct a roll call for attendance purposes.
Yes, Dr. David Hemberger?
Here.
Allison Wilson?
Here.
Hunter Ahrens?
Here.
John Fidler? John?
Dr. David Hemberger? Here. Allison Wilson?
Here.
I think they're on delay.
Hunter Ahrens? Here. John Fidler?
Good.
Okay. Dr. Ann Herring?
I'm here.
Okay. Michael Japina? Dr. Sharon McLendon? Huri Miller?
Here.
Michelle Stratton?
I'm here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. So I want to get back to the public comment, because that's the because that's as you can tell, we're going to, this is going to be an interesting meeting because of some of the time delays associated with our hook-up this evening, so again, please bear with us. So in consideration of the interest that we have in the main subject this evening, we really do want to hear from the community. One of the first actions that we're going to take this evening is to take a look at Policy 903, and I'm going to ask the board to vote to suspend the portion of that policy that restricts the time limit to 30 minutes, and recommend that we allow up to three hours as necessary for public comment. In addition, we'd like to change the individual comment period from four minutes to two minutes. The suspension of this portion of the policy would be for this meeting only. So at this time, I'll accept a motion from a board member to effect the change in this policy.
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second to modify the policy for the purpose of this meeting to allow additional time, up to three hours as necessary for the purpose of public comment, and also to change the individual comment period from four minutes to two minutes. Is there any discussion? All in favor say, um, excuse me. All in favor, let's go through a roll call on this. Please run.
Hunter Ahrens?
Yes.
John Fidler?
All people?
Hi.
Dr. Ann Herring?
Yes.
Dr. David Hemberger?
Yes.
Michael Japina?
Yes.
Dr. Sharon McLendon?
Yes.
Huri Miller?
Yes.
Michelle Stratton?
All right.
Yeah.
Allison Wilson?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Thanks, board members. Motion passes. So we have provided an opportunity for public comment to anyone who was unable to attend this meeting due to a disability under ADA, so that they can make their comments by phone, since they wouldn't be able to come here. So I think what we'd like to do, Mr. Way, is we'd like to start with those individuals. I think we have two who are participating by phone. Allow them to make public comments, and then we'll move into the public comment portion with the members who were in attendance here. Mr. Way.
I just made my first call, went to voicemail. Both numbers went directly to voicemail. We'll try back.
Okay, but possibly we'll come back, you know, later to those, okay. So we're going to open it up to public comment. I would recommend we do this in an orderly fashion. If you would like to comment, please approach the microphone one person at a time. I would suggest we have no more than three people in a queue or lined up, you know, to the, to the microphone. Please keep your distance and be mindful of those around you. Keep your face mask on while you speak. And before you make any comments, please be sure to state your name and your address, and you'll have two minutes. We can start now.
My name is Bill Kaufman. I'm from 32 Longview Drive. For those of you that don't know me, I want to make it clear, I wanted our schools to be open from day one. I sent emails to the superintendent and the board expressing this. I tried to listen to what the reasons for virtual schooling were, and was even willing to accept them, since the biggest fear was safety of our children, as the number of cases skyrocketed to 25 or 30. The school board made the decision for the safety of our kids. But now, as the cases have declined to 87 on Friday, 75 on Saturday, and according to The Eagle, a seven-day average as of Monday was 63 cases per day. And we're talking about sending our kids to school. I guess this is the new common core math, since when I grew up, 87, 75, even 63 is more than double the number of cases when we voted, because it was skyrocketing. In my letter to each of you, I stress the importance of a child's education, and also stated that there would be particularly harmful for certain kids. So now you are seeing the harm that was done with the initial vote. We are planning on sending the kids back to a hybrid option. Isn't this the option that was ruled out from the very beginning? What has changed that this is now the preferred choice? Either vote to send the kids back full-time, or keep them at home for their safety. The hybrid option will not work for anyone, since concerned parents have the option of remaining virtual. Why don't those parents who want their kids to have time in school be allowed to do it full-time? Do they not want what is best for their kids as well? And for each of you, they change your vote to say going back to school is safe. You really need to think about it, when you said it was for the children's safety that we are keeping them virtual. I want each of you to hear a question that was off one of my children's vocabulary tests. Once exposed to COVID-19 virus, becoming infected appears to be blank for most people, as we continually see the numbers of those infected increase. The answers are: A, inexorable, which means impossible to stop, alter, or resist, inevitable; didactic, intended to instruct; palpable, capable of being handled; poignant, arousing deep emotion, especially pity or sorrow. I don't know what the correct answer is, because I haven't been able to see it on the test, but my question is, why, in the times that we are at, would this even be a question?
Sir, if you could, if you could just finish up, we'll be on your time.
I'm going to end with this. I beg each of you to make the right choice. Send the kids back to school full-time.
Thank you, sir. Hello.
Chris Jordan, 42 Glenoli Drive. First of all, I want to say thank you. It is great to see all of you back in person. It's wonderful. You're going to hear a lot of emotional pleas on both sides of the spectrum this evening. I hope that you would continue to support the recommendations of the Exeter administration and get the kids back in school, the same way you supported them back in August, when the decision was to go virtual. Please vote to open the Exeter schools to in-person instruction for the beginning of the second marking period. I'm going to keep my comments short and sweet tonight. I think you all know how I feel. I would prefer to go back full in-person, and I think that's best for the children, but at this point, what's on the table is the hybrid model. I would at least vote on that favorably to continue to move forward with this process. Thank you.
Good evening. Dr. Josh Hoyt, 4511 Edgewood Drive. So good evening, everybody. I first wanted to thank all the teachers in the district for everything that they have done for the past year and everything they continue to do. As somebody who works in education and trains in education, for the past seven months, I've spent my time in the state and county training teachers on this model of instruction, and when they ask me, "Josh, what do we do?", I say, "I don't know." And I tell them, "Just do the best that you can. Do the best for your kids." And always put your kids first. And if you believe you're putting your kids first, then you're doing the right thing. So I'm here tonight to talk about making sure we keep putting our kids first, like our teachers have been doing. What I'm here to talk about tonight is the possibility of students changing teachers based upon their choice to either go hybrid or stay virtual. The district's and its teachers have put in a tremendous amount of work around the concept of social-emotional learning. The social-emotional learning was intended to build and foster relationships with their students, and also for their teachers to also develop relationships as well. During the current situation, we considered social-emotional learning to be absolutely paramount, an impairment to student learning, the ability to work together, to collaborate, and even to make sense of what was going on right now. This social-emotional learning was supposed to be to set the stage for everything that the kids were going to do. Changing teachers completely devoids all of that social-emotional learning. The first question my son asked me, who attends Reifton, after we talked about coming back, was, is, "Will I still have my teacher?" My second grader asked the same question, and I don't know what to tell them. And when I didn't know what to tell them, he started crying. Because in the amount of time in August, he's developed a relationship with his teacher, and vice versa. I know I'm running a little bit over, but just to be quickly here, teachers across the Commonwealth County and neighboring counties have been doing hybrid and concurrent instruction from the start of the year. When students receive their schedules in these districts in September, they receive a seat in their class. The student seats will remain the same in the teacher's class whether they come in person, or they stay virtual with the teacher. Teachers teach their students in person and virtually in a synchronous model all day long. If by chance, a teacher is requesting a virtual environment, and the parents and children want them to stay with that teacher, districts are doing this, they're putting a body in the classrooms that the kids can come to school and still be with that teacher in a virtual environment, for the purposes of supervision. Doing this allows for a seamless transition if the school or district needs to close down again at the point of the year. Because if we change teachers now, there's the possibility they'll change teachers again, because lord knows what's going to happen when we get into cold and flu season, and the potential of more cases on the rise. My family, as well as others, ask you to continue to put students first and build upon the social-emotional learning and relationships that your amazing teachers have provided and continue to provide. There's no need to create any more unneeded anxiety and stress for teachers and students in an already stressful time. In addition to social-emotional learning, we all know as educators, the importance of structure and routines for kids, and this proposed model would allow for this structure and routine to continue. I know that these are very challenging times. I also know that you're probably building the ship as you're trying to sail it, as we all are. But I please, please, continue to allow students and teachers to stay together, that this is what's best for students and teachers socially, academically, and emotionally. Thank you for your time and consideration, as well as everything you do for this district.
Good evening. My name is Megan Shirey, and I live at 110 East 35th Street. First, I would like to commend the teachers and staff for their dedication, time, efforts, and willingness to adapt to the many changes in our education system during this time of uncertainty. I have a kindergartner and a third grader at Jacksonwald. My children are not benefiting from sitting in front of a computer all day, and it is severely jeopardizing their learning experience. It is frustrating that my kindergartner is expected to sit at a device for two and a half hours in the morning, and two to three hours in the afternoon, when their attention span is a fraction of that. The learning that takes place in kindergarten and at the lower elementary grades sets the foundation to succeed academically. Our schools play a fundamental role in supporting our children's development and academic achievement. The education system should provide our children with a positive learning experience, and the opportunity to learn and practice essential social, emotional, and problem-solving skills. I do not feel that these objectives are currently being met. I have reviewed the current option to return to the brick-and-mortar setting, and although it is not ideal for some, or for many, it does offer in-person learning. We have seen childcare centers reopen, athletic teams practicing, and most Berks County schools returned to in-person instruction without any major issue. Hamburg returned fully to in-person instruction this fall, without any issues to date. My children's education is a top priority, and unfortunately, at this time, with virtual education, I feel that their opportunity to learn is being jeopardized. Let me ask you, have you been to the store, a picnic, a birthday party, a family gathering? Has your child participated in activity, or attended camp, or a sport, or played with friends? Have you ate at a restaurant or been on vacation? Just like these activities, and the safety procedures that we have followed to do these things, schools can reopen safely with these protocols and policies in place. When looking at data for returning to school, we should also look at COVID cases locally in Exeter. Unfortunately, this is challenging, since Berks County does not have their own Department of Health, and each municipality is not reporting data, as is done in some neighboring counties. I would be happy to review the Department of Health information with you. I work in healthcare at a local hospital, and I've been working throughout the pandemic, and I've worked without appropriate PPE. I'm certainly not naive to COVID. I'm quite aware of the risk and concern for safety and protection. Certainly, no one ever expected to be working in the throes of a global pandemic. COVID is not a pediatric disease. Less than 10% of cases are in children and adolescents, with a tiny fraction of those cases being complicated or life-threatening. We need to get our children back in the classroom. If we don't, there will be long-term effects and consequences. I'm already seeing a rise in childhood obesity, mental health issues, fear, substance abuse, suicide, and the list goes on. Virtual learning has also caused unforeseen challenges and burdens for the families. Virtual learning is failing our children and the families. I do understand and respect that many of us have different views and opinions on COVID and returning to school. By offering an in-person option and continuing to offer a virtual option, I feel that this would help to meet the needs of our students and our families. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Just want to remind folks to try to stay around two minutes if you can.
We have the stats.
Hello, my name's Allison Schick. I live at 4708 Allison Road. As you're well aware, education is not one-size-fits-all, and virtual learning just isn't working for most families. While the hybrid plan is better than being 100% virtual, it's still not good enough. Our kids deserve to be in school full-time, if that's what works best for them. Families should have that option. Many other schools have been successful in going back to school full-time in person, so there's no reason that Exeter can't follow suit. So many parents are beyond frustrated with the choices, or lack thereof, that we're being given. You've probably seen or heard about the petition to give parents and students the option to go back to school in person full-time. As of about an hour ago, we had close to 700 signatures in support of sending our kids back to school full-time. And I've emailed a copy of the signatures, and a link to the petition to all of you for your reference. Some of the signatures were from grandparents, friends, and family members who live outside of our district, but the overwhelming majority, at least 75%, were from families who live and attend school in Exeter. Regarding the threat of contracting the coronavirus in school, we're all well aware of the risks. We know we're in the middle of a pandemic. However, I know I speak for many families when I say, "I've weighed the pros and cons", and the pros by far outweigh the cons for sending kids back to school full-time. My children's mental health is just as important as their physical health. They need to be around their peers and learn in person from their teachers. If you look at the number of failures in every grade level, you'll see that there's a significant increase this year. And that's not because of our teachers. We're very fortunate to have some phenomenal teachers in our district. This isn't easy on them either, and they're doing the best they can under these circumstances. And some of the failures are due to technology issues. Some are due to kids not being given the proper tools to be successful, one of which is in-person learning. Regardless of the reason, one thing's certain. It's not our children that are failures, but our school district right now is failing our children. Thank you for your time.
My name is Kendra Sitook. I live at 511 West Never Sink Road. I'm a brand-new parent to the Exeter School District. I have twin kindergartners at Jacksonwald, and I am not impressed. I have three adult children. This is my second round at having kids in school, and I can say that my kids are not learning. Being virtual is not my expectation of how a kindergartner should learn. They're frustrated. They're not, they don't have attention. I have no way of knowing if the I have no way of knowing if the teacher knows that they are not grasping the concept of what they're talking about. They have 15 increments, 15-minute increments of a learning period. They rush through sections of their schedule. I don't have enough time as the mother trying to sit with my kids to go from one subject to another because the teacher has no idea that we're falling behind. There's no way to assess the kindergartners. My kids didn't get their kindergarten assessment. They don't even know, I don't even know if they're placed properly or if they're where they need to be academically. And I haven't seen a plan for an assessment in the future to put them even back in brick and mortar. As much as I am personally afraid of COVID, I'm a healthcare worker, I see firsthand what it does every single day to patients, but those patients have comorbidities that make them more susceptible. My kids don't have those comorbidities. They're young, they're healthy. The patients who are getting it, they're older, not, sorry, they're old. You know, they're the ones who need to be protected. My kids are not going to take COVID home to anybody. They're five, they completely understand the virus, they know how to wear a mask, they know what hand washing is. They know more now about what hygiene is than the average five-year-old should know. And I fully, fully, fully support sending our kids back to brick and mortar. They need structure, they need guidance, and they're not getting it at home. I am not an educator, my husband is not an educator, and we should not be forced to educating our children. That is why we pay taxes, that is why we have a school system, that is why we have teachers who went to school to be educators. Put the teachers back to work full-time, put my kids back in school full-time, put our life and our community back together because this is tearing us apart.
My name is Kristin Ott. I live at 10 Bowes Lane. I am a mother of four, an older child who went through the Exeter School District and graduated in 2012, and three children who are still students in the Exeter School District. I've had my share of ups and downs with the school district, but the current climate has been the worst. My children spend most of their weekdays and evenings staring at a 12-inch computer screen, trying their best to pay attention and learn anything. We want our children away from the mobile phone and gaming system screens, but isn't this the same? Children don't have a long attention span, and within an hour of remote learning, forget it. They are not listening, and who can blame them? The teachers are doing their best with what they were thrown into, and that is commendable. However, the school board's lack of plan prior to the school year, which has yielded a poor school experience for all our students, needs to be corrected. My children are stressed out with the long days staring at a computer screen, the workload given to them. As a result, their personalities are changing for the worst, and that's the most heartbreaking to me as a mother, to see happy kids turn angry and show signs of depression due to the stress of virtual schooling. They need to be back in the classroom. I understand remote learning may be working for some, or some parents don't feel safe sending their children to school, that's their option, but at least they have that option to stay home and continue learning. Those parents can make that choice for their kids, but do not have the right to make that choice for anyone else's children. All I ask is to give parents who want to send our children to school the option to go back in the classroom and try to salvage the rest of the school year as the first two months have been a disaster. Children need to be in the classroom with teacher engagement. I am asking the school board to vote for the school learning and give us options. If the school board votes against in-school learning, you are failing the parents who pay high school taxes, and you're failing, most importantly, our children. Thank you.
Alex Schatz has left the conference.
Hi, my name is Leanne Gatto, and I am at 4502 Farming Ridge Boulevard. I want to first thank all the teachers who are working tirelessly to reach our students, to the administrators who have to make the tough decisions, and to the board for leading in unprecedented times. I appreciate this opportunity to come here tonight. This year, I have felt like I have spoken but have not been heard. I have expressed my feelings but have not been empathized with. I have been dealt with but not supported. I'm a mother of three students and one graduate from last year. They all have different needs. My youngest is autistic, my second youngest is gifted but is now developing OCD traits just during this time, and of course, my teenager loves virtual school. All have very different needs, and is it possible to meet their needs? As a teacher for Penridge School District, I can tell you, yes, it is. It has been very difficult, but it has been possible. I teach three different models at the same time, but I go to sleep at night knowing that I have not failed my children, my students. But when I come home, I hear from my husband how poorly the day went, from the meltdowns to the temper tantrums to the eloping to the hitting. I hear from my son nonstop, he just needs to talk to somebody. Mom, please, please, can I go to my friends? Can I go, can I call my friends? Mom, I just want to see my friends. My husband, being unemployed, has been a blessing, but we know that he can't go back to work until our children go back to school. I urge you, for the sake of our children, for their social, their mental stability, and their academic success, please open up the schools full-time. Thank you.
My name's Julie Cox. I live at 106 Heathrow Court. I am a mother of a fifth and seventh grader, and I have to say, my children are doing well, and I understand that other kids are not doing well, and I sympathize with those parents. But my comments here have been shared with the board through an email, but I wanted people to get a perspective of a science perspective, understanding this virus. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts with you. I hope to give some more information and a broader view of the situation. I am a research scientist at GlaxoSmithKline. My company is on the front line of finding treatments and a vaccine for COVID-19. I have personally worked with and researched other coronaviruses such as SARS and MERS. These two strains remained isolated to specific parts of the globe. COVID-19 has been declared a worldwide pandemic and has spread to every country. SARS, MERS, and COVID-19 are coronaviruses. This means they look similar and are structured the same, however, there are differences in their genetic makeup, just like humans. One important difference between COVID-19 and these other two coronaviruses is how it physically attaches to the human body. It latches on in a stronger manner, causing the body to have to work harder to get rid of the virus. It also allows more viral particles to infect the human body compared to other viruses. The best way I can describe this is having a leaf fall into your hair. It takes minimal effort to brush that leaf out. If you compare it to a burr landing in your hair, it takes much more effort to remove it. If a bunch of leaves and a bunch of burrs land in your hair, the probability of the burrs attaching to your hair and taking a long time to remove is a lot higher than the leaves. I've heard people say, oh, this virus isn't real, people are afraid. It's the same as the flu, this will go away after the election. I'm here to tell you this virus does exist. It is not the flu, and most of us have a healthy respect for what could happen if one or more of our family members expose and contracts the virus. The media and the people focus on death and survival rate. This seems to be the basis of many people's arguments and why schools should be back full-day, all-day. What is not talked about as widely is the long-term effects that people deal with once they are recovered. Many people deal with permanent kidney damage, liver, heart, lung, and the inability to concentrate. This is because the virus attaches to a receptor called ACE2. This receptor is in 14 different organs of the body. That means there are 14 different organs that could potentially be damaged. This long-term damage has been well documented with SARS and MERS. We have also seen this with polio. Before the polio vaccine, many people recovered or left paralyzed. We have much to learn, and we can't rush science. I support the hybrid model so the school can control the percentage of the population in the building. This presented plan automatically cuts the occupancy by 50%, which should allow for proper social distancing. If the school board should go full-day, this, sorry, if the school board should decide to go full-day, all-day, this could potentially make social distancing difficult. To complicate things even more, other factors include viral load and exposure. This is why people passing by in the grocery store are not at high risk because you don't spend much time around the same person or even talk to them. In schools, the amount of time in the presence of others is longer than 15 minutes. This is why it's important to have people spaced out properly. I am in favor of a more cautious approach, giving families a choice of a hybrid model to send their kids back to a brick and mortar or all-virtual. This path forward gives the school the best chance to keep the teachers in safe. I have more, but I don't want to take up more time. Thank you.
Good evening, Exeter School District School Board. My name is Matt Clip, and I live at 3803 Patton Street in St. Lawrence. I'm the father of a very smart and energetic five-year-old kindergarten student at Jacksonwald Elementary. Since the start of virtual learning, my son's confidence, happiness, and enjoyment of being educated has dropped to an all-time low. He loves to learn and be pushed, but virtual learning does not do that. Putting children of this age in front of an iPad for four to five hours per day does not push them, it is not a proper form of education. It's checking a box. My son is crying by the end of his two-hour-and-15-minute afternoon lesson. How is that helping my child? Do you think this is properly preparing him for school? To watch your child, who has loved education so much, struggle and lose confidence is heartbreaking as a parent. Not only is this taking a toll on our children, it's taking a toll on our families. We need our young students back to brick and mortar as soon as possible. My biggest fear is that our children will lose confidence in themselves before they ever have an opportunity to set foot in school. It is still confusing to me why our children can be on sports field but cannot be in a classroom where it's much easier to implement additional safety precautions. My three-year-old daughter can go to preschool three days per week, has no issues following additional safety protocols. Other schools in the area have opened successfully. So please explain to me why our students cannot be in a classroom. My closing thoughts are this: It is imperative that Exeter School District provide our children with a brick and mortar option no later than second quarter this year. Our children need in-person education, so I ask the school board to help us fight for our schools to open their doors second quarter this year. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carrie McCarty. I live at 3902 Penns Drive in St. Lawrence. My first question is, where are the kids' grade levels from last year to this year? Because I know where my kids are. I'm going to read an email that I sent to the board for the last meeting you guys had, and it was quickly shut down. So it's past tense. Yesterday morning was a bad morning. My son, who is a senior, was frustrated with his grades. Ultimately, his grades are his fault. But nonetheless, I was treated in no way a mother should ever be treated over unfinished schoolwork. I had to leave the house. As I drove, the tears started streaming down my face, and the words "I'm failing" came out of my mouth. Out of everything life has thrown me, virtual schooling is going to make me throw in the towel? When I arrived back home, my son, well, I lost my spot. When I arrived back home, my son had no idea why I was so upset. After school, I talked to him about what had transpired. I couldn't yell, I was far too hurt. I couldn't scream, I was far too angry. So instead, I closed my eyes and I said, "I'm sorry." I couldn't imagine being 18 years old with the weight of the world on my shoulders. I couldn't imagine going to school one day and, in their eyes, never to return again. I couldn't imagine having to learn how to go to school online overnight in expectations of having it all together. Oh, he was punished for the way he spoke to me and treated me, but he needed to know someone was still in his corner. As I laid down for the evening, getting ready to close my eyes, I forced myself to reflect upon my day. When I gave him his punishment, he didn't argue like he normally would have. He just handed over his phone and other electronics. I had to call him into my room and ask him why. He said, "I know what I did was wrong. I'm just tired and I'm frustrated, and I want to go back to school." It was then that it hit me. I'm not failing my children. I, as their mother, am teaching them the lessons I need to be teaching them. His anchors and his frustration and his disrespect yesterday was not a reflection of my failures. It was a reflection of yours, the Exeter School Board and administration. It is time to open these doors and allow our children to have some time of normal again. They need some pressures taken off of their shoulders. They need to be kids. Thank you for your time.
My name is Timothy Redding, and I'm from 4506 Edgewood Drive. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm a son, husband, father, and teacher in my 19th year in the classroom. I've been out of school since March 12th. I am thankful for the many sacrifices made to construct a return plan in uncharted territory. My hope is that we provide outstanding educational opportunities, whether in-person or virtual, but always in a safe environment. I want to say thank you for the teachers, for the unwavering effort to prepare our students for success. I want to say a special thank you to the students who have been resilient in continuing to motivate this community to give you our very best leadership. Thank you to the parents and extended families for your endless sacrifices that we have all given up, whether it's picking up supplies, watching children, sacrificing so much more here in the beginning of the school year. I would like to dive into the practical application of this safety and security plan, as, again, there are many theories, but putting into practice what we have in place needs a lot of training, a lot of guidance. What I'm asking you tonight is empower us as teachers, empower us as a community, allow us to all come together for the betterment of our children. Will the Exeter School teachers across the district be required to clean as a part of their duty day, not just instruct, but clean, to also help and care and maintain a safe environment for our children? If, in fact, this is so, will the products include an understanding of kill time as well as the transfer ability of this virus? Are we training our staff and our community well enough to put every effort forward to be back in brick and mortar? And if that's true, then obviously there is a vote that will be placed tonight. Likewise, is there a plan for safeguard the air quality in our classrooms with and without windows? Will additional cleaning staff be hired to assist this process? Is there a plan for the use of outside substitutes who might travel within other districts and other buildings? Has this committee discussed a plan for hiring back paraprofessionals to assist with instructional need, to assist with creating the least restricted environment for our students? We are asking for empowerment, not only as parents but community members. Please give us your best leadership. Think carefully about the care of our children. Again, I come from a family that cares for elderly. We have elderly living with us, and I also am the father of a staff member here and as well, I'm sorry, a staff member and as well as a father of four individuals that I care for deeply in every single level of this district. I appreciate your time, I appreciate your sacrifices. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for the time.
My name's William Hasselwack, 500 Fabers Road. I'd like to thank you guys, there's no easy decision, there's no decision that you can possibly make that's going to... I'd like to thank you guys. There's no easy decision. There's no, there's no decision that you can possibly make that's gonna satisfy everyone within the school district. Whether to continue virtual, do the hybrid model, or attempt to go back, you know, full brick and mortar. Just make sure that, that you weigh all the options and consider all the things that are plausible. The virtual, you know, the technology uh issues that they run into with the Chromebooks, not being able to handle all the different windows that are open. The, you know, internet speeds, you know, if, if you go back into the classroom, the hybrid model, having all the students in school online at the same time, is that actually gonna hold up or is that gonna crash? If you go back to full brick and mortar, um, I have other safety concerns besides just, you know, coronavirus, you know? You're having masks on everyone is, is a problem. You don't, you won't know who's getting on the school bus right away. You won't know who's entering the school building right away because we are all wearing masks. That is one thing that, that needs to be considered as well, but um, I don't envy your decision that you have to make 'cause there is not a right one, and there's not one that can satisfy everyone here, but you're gonna have to look and figure out what benefits the majority, and we're gonna have to move forward. Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm David Volmer from three thirty-five South Baumstown Road. My son's a sophomore here at the high school, and I just wanna keep this short. Um, I'm open to getting the school open full-time again. Um, I'm also for online learning for individuals who deem that's necessary for their family. And after hearing everyone speak here tonight, I think it's an overwhelming majority of the community wants the kids to go back to school. I think it's your duty as elected officials to listen to the majority and open the schools back up. Thank you.
Hello, I'm, I'm Shawt Kluzowitz, four hundred Walnut Road, Birdsboro, PA, one nine five oh eight. I am a teacher here in the district as well as a resident, and I'm also the president of the Association for Exeter. Now, I heard a lot of people talk about the safety of coming back. The teachers, oh my gosh, myself included, we wanna come back in the worst way. We really do. I think the way Dr. Minner is doing it right now is the safest possible way for everybody, including students and teachers. I think this is the best possible way that we can actually slowly return back to semi-normal at least, too. I'm in favor of the hybrid model that she's proposing, and so is the association. And trust me, when I tell you I was so angry last year when we all went back, where we all went viral because of this virus, I miss my students. I miss my, um, I miss seeing them every day. I miss giving them HUDs and things like that, but it is, I think it's important that we actually listen to the professionals, listen to, um, listen to just the professionals, making sure that everybody's safe, not just the students, but also the teachers, and we have to remember that. We have a lot of teachers who are, myself included, who are considered old, okay? So, but we have to make sure that, uh, everybody's safe, all the staff is too. We are in favor of Dr. Minner's hybrid model, coming back. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Arnn. I'm at thirty-nine Bent Brook Circle. And oftentimes, I've heard that those of us that are in favor of return to brick and mortar are either woefully ignorant or worse, horribly callous. I can assure you that I'm neither of those with things. I've read every study that's been available since this pandemic has started. I have had anxiety attacks. I've been up in the middle of the night worrying about my son, who's a second grader here at a Wotton. He also suffers from anxiety, and that has really ramped up, I suppose, since this pandemic has started. My mother has been an amazing godsend. I have a tremendous safety net. But she can't sit with him for hours every day and keep him on task and teach him what he's missing and redirect his breakout groups when the little girl that is his partner is giving him a tour of her room. I worry about my son. I have the greatest respect for the dangers of this virus. I've read the study that came out of the UK about the spread in schools. I've read the study that came out of South Korea about that the virus stays in a child's nose cavity for several weeks. I know that it attacks people's organs, that it is not just a respiratory disease. But what I know is that my son needs to be in school. And I am not callous either. I myself am a teacher at a school district that has gone back full-time. Our transportation director has done an amazing job, has staggered our arrivals of our students, so it is not an en masse entrance. Our custodial staff, our facilities director have done an amazing job. Extra cleaning, extra lunches. All done efficiently, effectively, so that those students that need to be in school can be in school. All I'm asking is for my son to walk through those doors on November second. It's necessary. Some might even say it's essential. Thank you.
Um, good evening. My name is Marcy Strauss. I live at twenty-one Beaus Lane. I currently have two students in the district. I have a junior in the high school and an eighth grader at the junior high. I do have two older boys who have already graduated. Um, I'm here tonight to advocate for all, um, students for in-person learning. I'm specifically here to advocate for my daughter. Um, she has Down syndrome, and this mode of learning is not working. Um, if you would sit in on these classes that these teachers are trying to teach with students with varying abilities, um, emotional issues, behavioral problems, nothing is getting done. I'm here to ask you to please consider getting these kids back into school for at least some face-to-face learning. It's so important. My daughter has made zero progress since March. She is maintaining what she knows, but as far as moving forward, it's not happening. And it's also causing problems at home. I'm not her teacher. She doesn't want me to help her. I need to be there on top of her, making sure she's where she's supposed to be. What's she supposed to be looking at? Is she, does she have the right stuff out? And she's telling me to get away and moving her Chromebook away. It's a battle, and it was never like this. She used to love school. So please, please consider getting these kids back into school for some face-to-face learning time. Thank you.
My name is Justin Couch. I live at nine eighty Shelburne. We've got a lot of accidents over there, unfortunately. Why don't you look at this man over here? That man goes to work every day. Why don't you look at the nurses and the people that stand for this constitution, for this country, who go to work every day and never waver for this country? I have the stats right here about the COVID deaths this week, okay? These children are not getting the education they need, and not only that, they are getting robbed and raped of the communication that they need with other children. They need to have this. They need it. They need to establish these relationships. I submit this to you. You can have it, but I'm telling you, you are robbing these children every day. You are not back in school. And you know what? If a teacher says she's not willing, or he is not willing to go back to school and teach children, you know what? Fire him right on the spot. I own several businesses, and you know what? If, I never wavered. I'm sure he didn't waver. My girlfriend didn't waver. He didn't waver. Any day to get up and stand up and do what's right. And when you were robbing these, what you were doing to these children is you were robbing them of every experience that they have at playing on the playground with other kids. His kids had a birthday recently, and guess what? They didn't know a single kid in their class. You know why? Because their teachers give them more breaks than they have in school time. They got robbed of having a community of people that they can count on. What are you doing? Are you guys serious? What the hell is your problem? I'm being serious here. Listen, I don't have a doctorate, but I do have a master's and a couple other certifications. But I'm telling you, I would fire every single one of you. That's it. I'm done. But here's the report.
Hello, my name is Christina Manning. I live at fifty-six Oral Avenue. I have a friend that could not be here. She is attending a grad class online, and she asked me to share this with you. This is from Stephshire, Rife Place. She cannot be here due to having a grad class online. Coronavirus is real. It exists in this world. People have died from this awful virus, one person being my grandmother. I was able, unable to see my grandmother, and my opportunity to say goodbye to her was through a Zoom call when she was connected to a ventilator. It was the worst experience of my life. I have taken precautions to stay safe and keep the people I love safe. I am a reading aid at Reifton, an intern at the high school, and an alumni of Exeter and a resident for twenty-four years. I do not wanna go through the pain of watching my coworkers, my past teachers, and the students I work with be sick with this virus and possibly die. I know virtual learning is not ideal. I'm a graduate student, and all of my classes are online. It is challenging, but I feel safe. Yes, some students are going through challenges now with virtual learning, but some students will go through challenges going back to school. Imagine your kids wearing a mask every day for hours. I've seen plenty of kids out in public complain and take off their masks because they do not wanna wear them. I do not agree with sports and extracurricular activities outside of school, but from the research, being outside is safer. This is not an easy time for anyone, but let's not have the end of the yearbook be all the teachers, students, and other staff members we lost this year due to the coronavirus. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tanya Eldridge. I live at seventy Gunpowder Lane. Um, I just wanted to share what I'm going through with my two children. I have a seventh grader and I have an eighth grader. Um, I also have a tenth grader who goes to a private school, um, full in-person. They've had no COVID issues. Um, one student tested positive, and they just had that particular class, stayed home for two weeks, um, and everyone went back to normal. My seventh grader is a happy, wonderful girl who just loves life and loves everything, and we went into this with a really positive attitude. Every day she cries. Every single day, she gets on the computer, she has a bad connection, something's not right. She doesn't get good feelings from her teachers. She hasn't met her teachers, of course, other than online. She doesn't wanna do school anymore. She was an A student when she started, and now she's, she called me yesterday while I was at work and said, "Mom, it's not working. I can't get this figured out." She's on the verge of tears. And I said, "Forget it. Be done for the day. We can't help you. Just be done for the day." My son, on the other hand, is an eighth grader, and he hasn't been on in, hmm, what is it? Week eight? Week nine? Nine weeks. For nine weeks, he hasn't done school. It has been pure hell for our family. We don't fight with him anymore because it's always a fight. There's no level of accountability because he doesn't know his teachers. And if anybody asked his teachers, they'd say, "He's a great kid. He does fine when he comes to class, except he doesn't even go to class." So, and there's nothing. We've called the police. We've done what we can do to try to get this kid to do class, and there is nothing we can do because he thinks this whole thing is a joke. And it's not for, because we're not trying. We're trying to get him to take this seriously. He's checked out. If he was in school, he would do just fine, but he cannot do this online learning. He has ADHD. He cannot do it. So he has just completely given up. So it has been, um, a real hassle, and my husband is in the medical field as well, and he's not gotten it either. And you know what? I know people are afraid to come back to work. He's been working with COVIDs, that's what we refer to them as, with COVIDs for months, and he's not gotten sick. He worked face-to-face with the patients. It's not as bad as everyone's saying it is. It's not going to kill our students when they come back to school. And if people are at high risk, I understand them wanting to stay home, but that should be their option, and we should also have the option of letting our kids come back to school. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jill Glennon. I'm at three thirty-nine Gibraltar Road. And, um, after hearing the one woman speak about her daughter with Down syndrome, I decided to speak. I'm a former life skills support teacher of seven years, and I cannot imagine that that little girl is getting FAP, that's Free Appropriate Public Education, and that is not fair to her or any of the other students that wanna be in school. I also am a mother of three children that could possibly be at the Exeter School District. Currently, only one of them is there. My son is in fifth grade, who is an amazing student and always loves school. He asked me a month ago to homeschool him. Luckily, I have the ability to do that, so we disenrolled him from Exeter. My other daughter should be in kindergarten this year, and we decided to hold her back and send her to a pre-K program at St. Catherine's so she would get one-on-ones instruction because kindergarten virtually is just not acceptable. My daughter, who's in third grade, is okay with virtual right now. She wants to be in school, but it's not ideal for her. We need a choice to go back in school. I have friends and relatives in the medical field, and all of them that have the choice send their kids back to school fully. My brother is a doctor. His four children are in school fully. I trust him and his opinions, and I've been researching. Never in the history of the world have we ever been guaranteed safety, ever, ever. And it's just not possible, and you guys still can't guarantee our safety. And if the citizens of this district are okay with making that choice with sending their kids back, they deserve that choice. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bev Pergole. I live at seven Scotland Drive. Um, I wanna thank the district for offering the virtual, um, option at this time. My daughter is doing very well. I have, um, one that graduated from Exeter, um, one that graduated from Berks Catholic. I have one in eleventh grade, and I have one at second, in second grade at a Wotton, and she loves the virtual learning. My eleventh grader loves the virtual learning. Um, my husband works in Long Island, New York. He's worked through the whole pandemic, the whole time. Um, I've been in healthcare for twenty-five years, and it's not the virus that I'm afraid of sending the kids back to school. I don't want my kids to have to sit all day with masks on while they're trying to learn. I just think it'll be a distraction and that they won't, um, absorb, absorb the learning while this mask is on their face. So I ask, I'm hoping that the school district continues with the virtual learning. I'm very happy with it. I know some people want their kids back in school, um, and I do too, but not while we have to be masked. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Hi, I'm Nicole Hart Renner. I live at forty-seven hundred Ryan Court. I really don't have anything written. I have three kids. I have an eleventh grader. She's doing phenomenal. She actually is doing, has As. Doesn't mind doing the virtual. I have, um, a ninth grader who just recently got into ninth. I have a ninth grader who just recently got into ninth. He's doing horrible, very, very bad. And he wants to go back in the worst way, and he knows he can't. And I really think that it would be really beneficial for him. He has a lot of different diagnoses. I'm not going to, you know, share that with you guys. But he's really taken a toll on this. Even at the beginning of March, he had no clue what was going on, what was, you know, expected of him. And I have a younger son who is in Lorraine, and he's in third grade. And at the beginning, he loved it. Now he begs me, and he asked me today to record this if anything crazy happened. But he said he doesn't even care if he wears masks. He just wants to get back and see his friends, and he wants to see his teacher, and he wants to be in school. And I know a lot of people are afraid of the virus, and I hear a lot of different opinions. And I really feel that we should have a choice to either send our kids back full-time, or if the kids or if the adults don't want to send their kids back, great, because they don't have to. But I really feel that we should have a choice to send our kids back if we want to. And that's pretty much it. Thank you all for working.
Hi, my name is Kim Kime. I live at 1257 Fox Run. I have three kids in the district, a fourth grader, a seventh grader, and a ninth grader. Virtual learning's not working out well for us. So I am fully in favor of going back to school. But when we heard the hybrid plan last week, the elementary plan sounds okay. The junior high and high school plan, there's no... We don't know what we're looking at as... So we're going to decide if we either send them back to the hybrid or we keep them home. But nobody really knows what the hybrid plan looks like. And I know I've asked, and I've just been told, we need to see the numbers before we can really share the plan, which is fine, but how are we going to know how to... I know if the board votes that we're going to do hybrid, it was said that tomorrow we are supposed to get this survey or whatever to decide. But how are we going to decide so you have the numbers if we don't know what the plan actually is? Like, are the kids just going to sit in the classroom on their Chromebooks like they are at home but in the classroom? Or are they going to have actual interaction with their teacher? And then for the virtual kids, are they just going to be brought in on Zoom just to watch what's happening? Or how is all that going to work? So I fully support sending the kids back to school. I would prefer full in-person, but I'll take hybrid to start the process to get them back. But I'd like to know exactly what's going on before I decide I want to send them back hybrid or I'm going to keep them at home. So it would be nice to kind of know that before we have to decide. But thank you.
Hello, my name is Jenica Biggs. My address is 4385 Hillside Road. I have four children in the district in first, second, third, and sixth grade. My husband and I are both essential workers and have worked full-time during the pandemic. I would like to see a full return to school. I do not have the time to stand up here and describe what my day looks like with, between all four of my little kids. But it is not good. I physically cannot sit with all of them at once to give them the help that they deserve. I do not have a support system other than my husband, who's at work during the week. So everything I do with them is on me after me working all night long. If the hybrid option is the only option, then I ask you to look at the model that is being offered. I feel it will not work. It will disrupt the little ones, more so than them just being home on the virtual. For them to go to school and then come home and have lunch and recess and then have to get back on the computer five days a week, it's just not going to happen. I would rather see a two-full-day hybrid plan. It makes more sense. I feel like it's a less disruption for the children and the teachers and the staff to have one group of kids there for Monday and Tuesday and the other half there for Thursday and Friday. Also, the teachers, I feel, are essential workers, just like I am an essential worker. They should be able to get N95s and shield, and face shields, which is the only PPE I have at work when I physically am touching and caring for these COVID patients. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hi, my name's Tom Middleton, 6113 Washington Drive. I'm here to advocate for my son who's got Downs. It's almost like, I feel like as a family, we're failing him because me and my wife both work. We come home, it's almost three hours a day after we already put in eight hours at work, that we gotta sit down with him. He's throwing the laptop off the table, slapping it shut. And there's nothing we can do, you know? We got a teacher that's virtually with us, just saying, "Zach, come and sit back down at the table. Zach, come sit back down at the table." He's not listening to that. He's not listening to me. You know, his home is supposed to be his happy place. It's not happy anymore. And that's all I got to say.
I'd like to say one more thing. How about instead of defunding the police, we defund you?
Mr. Wade, do you have the folks on the phone? Name, name and address, please.
Please say your name and your address.
My name is Laura Bosta, and I live in Camp Hill.
Go ahead and ask your question.
Okay. Hi, I am making a statement regarding the mask mandates. These are unlawful ethics, and they include, but are not limited to, face masks, social distancing, temperature-taking, chemical... My name is Laura Bosta. I live in Camp Hill. I am addressing the, I'm addressing the mask. I am making a statement regarding mask mandates.
You'll need to mute the, you'll need to mute the audio in the background, please.
Okay, it's unmuted.
Okay. You can go ahead now.
Okay, I'll go ahead. Thank you. I just want to make a statement about the mask mandates and the other mandates such as social distancing, temperature-taking, chemical sterilization, washing hands constantly, and other enforcements. There is no mask law, and there's no social distancing law. And children should not be forced to these orders because they lead to great physical and psychological damage to their well-being, which is considered child abuse. There's, the schools have no legal authority to force masks on children, teachers, and other school personnel. There's no code that requires mask-wearing and social distancing. These are only unlawful guidelines by the health and the governmental agencies. But they also, they violate our constitutional and civil and human rights. I have a statement. I will be emailing at you with all the links. I also have science showing that children are not spreaders of COVID-19. And also, all of these mandates are based off of false science fraudulent, the fraudulent test that all these mandates are being based off of. And I will send you all the links to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, is this Carol? Hi, Carol. Are you ready to make your comment? All right, give me one moment. I'll tell you when you can get started. Do you have, do you have any, are you listening to this in the background? Oh, okay, good. So I will give you one moment.
Name and address.
We'll need your name and address. All right, go ahead.
My name is Carol Spencer. I'm at 40 Sage Brook Drive. I have two children in the district, both at the high school. My daughter is doing fine with virtual learning. I have a son who is autistic and also has an intellectual disability. And he is currently in the crossroads program, transitioning to adult life and the life skills program. And unfortunately, virtual learning has been a failure for him. Despite the best efforts, sorry, the best efforts of his teachers, who are amazing, he has made zero progress since March 13th, zero. I'm sorry, I didn't realize I would get so emotional over this. Kids with autism and the low-incidence kids need consistency like you would not believe. And kids like my son and others like him, like Marcy's, like Mr. Middleton's son, they need that daily face-to-face to make any progress. We have seen an increase in aggressive behavior, self-injurious behavior. And for the first time, our son is on medication to keep him calm, to get him through the school day. And hearing Mr. Nelson say that home should be a happy place, he's absolutely right. That breaks my heart. And I do have a question. So I do have a question. I distinctly remember Dr. Minor saying that when we were going to this model, that they would be looking at other schools who are going back full-time and would be doing data and taking research. Has that happened? Because there are schools out there who have been successful with it. I met a teacher today who has a kindergarten full of kids wearing masks, and they're fine. So what data has been taken to, to help make this decision? And that's what I have to say. I thank you all for your time. I know this isn't an easy decision, but thank you for giving us the chance to speak.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe that represents the end of our public comments section. I will ask Dr. Minor if you have any comments or any reaction that you'd like to offer in regard to the public comments.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. The last caller in particular, you know, had a, had a direct question regarding research with other school districts. And we have, we have county superintendent meetings, and of course, I speak with colleagues. One of the frustrations I think all school superintendents have been experiencing is that there has been absolutely no requirement whatsoever for any public reporting of school district incidents related to COVID-19. So that's, that, there is no available data anywhere. There's no public school reporting regarding transmission within public schools. I do want to also address the needs of our parents, particularly who have children in our low-incidence programs. We do recognize that those children who have intellectual disabilities, autism, virtual learning is a particular burden for those children and for those families. And I've said this many times, but I think it bears repeating. It is our intention to have IEP teams meet and look at all of the potential of our hybrid schedule, should the board approve it, so that students who need additional time, because those low-incidence classes tend to have very few students in them, that we would be able to provide that additional time safely. We do take it very seriously. I'm a former pupil services director. Mrs. Harris is an outstanding pupil services director who's joined our district recently. So I do want to speak to those families particularly and say, your IEP teams, you know, are the first point of contact. Ask for a meeting, have a meeting. And I think there is flexibility and a genuine interest in making sure that those very unique needs do get met. So I wanted to just address that in particular. Thank you, Dr. Hamburger.
Thanks, Dr. Minor. I think, you know, on behalf of the board, you know, I'd just like to say how much we do appreciate hearing from the public. We've received innumerable emails. I know Dr. Minor has had many, many phone conversations with members of the community. And the fact that so many people have come out here, you know, this evening says so much about, you know, your, you know, your passion, not only for public education, but also for your children and their, and their welfare. So, thank you. You know, it's, these are not easy situations. There are many opinions that we've heard, and they, and they span a wide spectrum. But you've shared real experiences, and these are important things for us as a board to hear. Because some of us don't have children at home who are going through this. And without, you know, your testimony, without your comments, it's really hard for us to fully understand, you know, what's going on on a day-to-day basis in your homes and your child's education. So thank you so much for that. Unless there are any other comments from board members?
Well, are we waiting till we get to that item on the agenda, or are we?
Pardon me?
Are we waiting to get to that item on the agenda, or are we discussing it now?
We can, we can move to that item on the agenda, Mr., Mr. Pina, if you're...
I mean, we're here. Why don't we just, why don't we just stay here and continue online? The comments are...
Yeah, we're going to move through our agenda pretty quickly, so we're going to get to that vote.
It's up to you. I just, I'm good with whatever we do.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we're, we have a few items on the agenda prior to the actual vote on the main topic. But let's start out, you know, and follow through our agenda. The next item on the agenda is personnel. Mrs. Wilson.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the conference requests listed below. Number one.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those board members who are by phone, say aye. Are we in contact with the board members who are on the phone?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have nine. Nine yes, zero no, and zero abstentions. Motion carries. Student functions. Student functions, Mrs. Strauss.
Dr. Hamburger, she asked me to read it, if that's okay. She asked me to read it, if that's okay.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Hamburger.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the revised emergency instructional time schedule for submission to the Pennsylvania Department of Education as required by Section 520.1 of the Pennsylvania School Code.
Is there a sec? We have a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions, but I'd like to address some of the members that spoke, made comments. So, Mrs. Strauss, are you still here? Could you, could you perhaps explain a little bit more about the consistency, structure, and predictability that your daughter would benefit from? Because I think you explained a little bit about some concerns that her needs were not being met. And I guess I just want to understand is what, what a sort of in-school setting would look like for you that would meet those needs and, you know, just some of your recommendations. And then Mr. Redding, if you would like to line up, because I want to... And then Mr. Redding, if you would like to line up, cause I wanna follow up with your questions as well.
Um, my daughter is, um, she does part-time in both. She does about 50% in life skills and like, um, ELA, English Language Arts, which is supplemental reading. She participates in social studies, gym class, um, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. The problem that we're having is when she is in with her transition life skills class, there are, um, other students in there with her that are in that class. They're all of varying abilities and on different levels. So the teacher is trying to deal with behavioral issues and still ask questions to one child and then she'll have to direct one to another while dealing with a behavior issue. And so it's kind of pointless. I mean, she's basically going over time and money skills that she already has been doing. It's just kind of like a review every day. When she's in social studies, she does have her para educator on the Zoom link with her. Um, however, we've had continual trouble when they try to do breakout rooms with her, for her to support her. They get disconnected and sometimes it takes us 15 minutes just to get linked again. And by then, we're already behind on what's going on in class. So I guess what I really would prefer is that she be in school. Um, her para educator is at the junior high in an empty classroom, sitting there watching her on a Zoom screen. I mean, it just seems kind of ridiculous that Peyton couldn't also be there and have her actually supporting her. So, I mean, I just think that she, if she was at the life skills classroom, she could actually be there with Mrs. Umarino and her para and get individualized attention to her math and her transition skills. During social studies, if she's not in the classroom at that, if that particular day, if they're not in the classroom, she could be online with Mrs. Gabriel there, her para, assisting her directly, helping her. Instead of trying to do it through the Zoom screen where Peyton's looking all over the place or not interested, or she can just mute her. I mean, I literally have to be right on top of her the entire time to be sure she's not muting, she's not paying attention, she's, uh, turning off her screen so they don't know she's there. And, um, she gets angry at me because I'm not her teacher and doesn't want me to do that. And so then we're battling for her to pay attention. And she's missing half the class time because we're fighting over her turning on her Zoom lens or answering Mrs. Gabriel. It's just very frustrating and, um, it's a whole different scenario when she's in school. I've had the conversation with her para and she's like, she's a total different kid. So I just, I'm just saying, I think you need to get these kids back in the classroom where they have a para educator there next to them, helping them and guiding them through their learning.
Thank, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Redding?
Yes, sir.
You had some questions, I wondered if you could pull them out again and talk about, uh, specifically, I think Mr. Prezui is here and perhaps some other folks can answer some of those questions around how the schools would be cleaned.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Prezui.
Mr. Prezui's up, up here, maybe we can?
Um, again, I think what I had previously asked was, will the Exeter teachers, uh, or who, what kind of staff members will we have present in the building throughout the day to continue to maintain a safe environment? And how might that practical, that applications of those theories work? Especially within maybe a junior high and high school, knowing that there's multiple passage times throughout the building when contact, uh, you know, could be at the highest.
Mr. Prezui, before you start, I, you know, I'm happy to answer that, uh, to the extent that I'm able. We have obviously a custodial staff. We do not, um, ask our teachers to, to perform the custodial staff duties. The custodians will do that. We have a number of two specifically physicians on our pandemic task force as well as a consulting doctor who's made herself available, who is an expert in infectious disease. And the very clear, um, guidance that we've gotten from all of those physicians is that the cleaning priorities need to be on high-touch, shared areas such as the public bathrooms, that the water fountains, uh, should not be, um, utilized as regular drinking fountains. And instead, we've installed water bottle filling stations. And so that is the expectation, is that the custodians will in fact clean the buildings, particularly the high-touch areas, and they'll be doing that throughout the day. Hand sanitizer, wipes, all those things will be available in classrooms and teachers can certainly, um, utilize wipes and other cleaning products if, if they so desire. But it's not the expectation that any, um, teaching staff member would be responsible for cleaning. I don't know, Mr. Prezui, you wanted to add anything to that?
May I just ask if a, a student's desk would be a priority to clean during the course of the day?
So, again, in consulting with our physicians, that as long as everybody is wearing masks at all times, there is very little research to support contact transmission when everybody is wearing masks. And so, um, you know, their guidance has been handrails, bathroom facilities, doorknobs, where, you know, kids might be touching, leaving doors open, those sorts of things be, um, the specific cleaning priorities. That there's not, this is a virus that's transmitted through person-to-person airborne droplets, that surface contact, there's, there's very minimal evidence to support that need. But again, we'll have wipes and cleaning products available in classrooms, you know, should there be a desire to do that between classrooms, um, sessions at the junior high and the high school. At the elementary levels, uh, the students will all have independent desks, whether they're in the AM session or the PM session. So in those circumstances, there wouldn't be, um, shared desks. But again, the advice of our physicians is one of the important reasons to have everyone, uh, wearing masks is so that those, you know, droplets don't end up on desktop surfaces.
Anything to add, sir?
No, did you have a specific question about the products we're using?
Well, I think that, that just goes back to, to potential kill time for any of these high spots. And, and again, looking at, uh, the passage time of even say four minutes, if that, if throughout the day is effective. Again, I think my, as a father or even as a teacher, um, I, again, I do feel for, for all the parents. Uh, as a teacher, teaching a classroom and, and trying to balance that within four children's lives as well is difficult, to say the least. So, um, I'm just looking at, again, the practicality with all intents and purposes, having our students back in the classroom as well as our teachers, safely. Thank you. Um, sir, I think again, was there any other specific questions that you had written down?
You know, you had some good ones, I didn't write them all down. I thought if you had anything specifically related to cleaning?
Yes, sir. Well, one of the other things to touch on was maybe the air quality within the rooms that are windowless.
Uh, I'll defer to Mr. Prezui as he is our facilities director and, you know, maintains our ventilation systems.
Yes, even windowless classrooms are serviced by our HVAC systems, which, uh, actually by law, uh, allow, induce outside air and circulation into those rooms. So, uh, so those, that room is being circulated through the system and being mixed with fresh outside air. So, you know, there is proper ventilation in those rooms.
Okay, thank you. I think the last, last few questions had to deal with more personnel issues and if any additional staff would be considered to be hired along with the paraprofessional support for instructional aids. Uh, that would include definitely the supports for special needs, uh, you know, uh, those, those students as well as instructional support for the teachers that are providing the education for those students.
So, uh, as, as you're aware, we, or may be aware, uh, a number of paraprofessionals were furloughed when we went to full virtual, who do not work with our low-incidence populations, um, or who worked as general instructional aids. Uh, at the voting meeting next week, we'll be asking for a recall of those personnel, um, with, should the board vote to approve the hybrid, uh, plan this evening. So we, we feel very confident that with those, um, individuals recalled, we'll, we'll have sufficient staff.
Thank you. And I think again, um, all the questions that are, were presented tonight are in the best interest of our, of our children and staff. And obviously, we thank you and everyone for, uh, the thoughts. Thank you.
So I just had one final question relative to speakers. I think it was Mrs. Kime who talked about, um, not really knowing, is she here? Not, not really, you know, knowing what exactly the, the plan is going to be when the students come back. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, so it's hinging on a survey. What are we, what are we, what exactly are we gonna do and when are people going to find out?
I'm not actually sure, um, what Mrs. Kime meant by, it was hinging on a survey at the junior high and senior high. Um, there, there is nothing that's hinging on any survey at the, the junior high or senior high. The students, um, if their parents choose the full virtual option, would continue with full virtual. They would go through their class schedule, um, and, and they would be, I think the one significant change is there'd be more synchronous time than there is currently in the schedule. If parent selects, um, and again, if the board approves, to have their student come back, um, in the hybrid model, that student would be assigned either to Monday and Thursday or to Tuesday and Friday. They would go through their, uh, schedule with slightly modified times, um, the day ending earlier than it normally, uh, has when we've been open previously. They would go to lunch, uh, and in terms of what would happen in their classrooms, all of their teachers in the junior high and the senior high, um, we've purchased a second monitor for those teachers. So they have a monitor where they can, um, use their device, their computer for whatever instructional, uh, items they're doing. And then have their second monitor for the students who are at home via Zoom, either because they're fully virtual or virtual on that particular day. They will have the students in front of them in their classroom. And they also all have iPivo cameras, which are cameras that can be set at six-foot distance from them and pick up their audio and video. So within that, the teachers, uh, you know, have latitude to use a variety of instructional techniques and modalities. But the, uh, emphasis of our administrative team and our professional development for our teachers is that all students, whether they're participating virtually or in the classroom, need to be learning the same standards with the same outcomes. But the, the pathway may be, uh, different. So at the Ed Committee, the specific example I gave was that, um, if a biology lab was involving dissection of a frog that day, obviously, we can't send frogs home. But there are, uh, virtual dissection opportunities. So the teacher would teach the standard, teach about the anatomy and biology of a frog. And then students who are at home may be asked to do a virtual dissection while students in the class may be able to use the actual materials. So those are some of the, uh, circumstances where being at school would have the specific benefit of tools and materials that, you know, we simply can't provide at home. But in terms of the actual educational experience, when we talk about learning from other schools, one of the, although, as I mentioned, we don't have good COVID data, the data that we, that we do have anecdotally from a number of our staff members who live in other school districts is that for students who participate virtually in some school districts, they feel as though they're spectators to the learning that's happening in the classroom versus actively engaged participants. And so our, our professional development and again, uh, the role of our administrators in supporting our teachers is, is really going to be focused on the idea that whether a student is virtual or in person, nobody is to be a spectator to their learning. Everybody is to be actively engaged. And that's certainly a challenge for teachers, having to teach in multiple modalities simultaneously. But we have outstanding teachers at Exeter. We have outstanding instructional coaches and administrators and, um, very confident that they'll be able to, to deliver this with excellence. There'll be a learning curve, it's, it's a change. But, um, you know, I, I, I truly believe that it's something that they'll be able to execute well. And we have learned from other school districts that allowing the students who are, um, participating virtually to be passive is, is a huge mistake. And it's not one that we want to replicate here.
Okay. So if they go back hybrid, the kids who are in person will still be getting, you're saying they're still getting that in-person instruction? They're not just gonna sit on Zoom all day?
Right, right. That's, that's correct. But again, I would say that there may be a time when the teacher is doing some kind of specific learning and they ask all of the kids to hop on the Zoom to have a class discussion, something along those lines. There may be times when a teacher puts the kids, you know, on Zoom into breakout rooms and asks the class to, you know, work in a group socially distant. Or there may be a time where the teacher asks a student in the class to engage in a breakout room with a student on Zoom. So I don't want to say that a student, um, you know, at, at Reifton, the junior high or the high school, would be device-free at school. We, we have made a determination that we will not be having our K-4 students bring a device to school, that we want them to really be focused on tangible books and those sorts of things. But at Reifton, our math program does involve, uh, the Chromebook directly. And then at the junior and senior high, there needs to be flexibility that sometimes they may be in Zoom and, and other times they, you know, they'll be watching their teacher. But we want the teacher to be teaching to both the kids virtually and the kids in the classroom, not one to the exclusion of the other.
Okay. No, thank you, that helps.
Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion from board members on this item? Okay, we're prepared to make a vote.
So, uh,
I'm sorry, Mr. Japina, do you have another?
Go ahead.
What are you sure, Mike?
I'm sorry. Yeah, can you, is it good? Um, I, I don't, I originally wrote something that I wanted to share tonight and I don't think it's really necessary. I really appreciate everybody's comments. Um, this is very challenging, uh, for all of us, as much as some people might not believe that it is. We've certainly all lost sleep over this. We've certainly all lost sleep over this. We've spent long amounts of time on the phone with one another, with Dr. Minor. It's been challenging and I think you, uh, folks definitely reflected that to us as well. Um, and I really don't envy and I strongly empathize with the situation that a lot of the parents are in as well as the extended family. Uh, I will be supporting, uh, moving to the hybrid option. Um, my personal judgment is that we need to move forward cautiously and conservatively. And that's why I don't support us going back fully in person at this time. I know other districts are doing it. I know other districts are trying to make a success out of it and probably doing so in some cases. Uh, but I believe very strongly, uh, that there is something very different about this year and that is the pandemic. And whether we choose this statistic or this statistic, it is deadly. Kids transmit it and there are 4,000 people or more that come into this school system every day in a normal time. And no building probably has anything less than 400 people in it. Congregating that many people at this, in this system, to me, uh, is a, is a danger. And I, I, you know, I associate myself well with the sentiment that was expressed by one of the callers about not wanting to see any type of teachers or community members or grandparents or anything get something from this building. But that's a risk we're taking in moving to this hybrid option. And I think the safest way to do that is slowly and cautiously. So that's why I'll be supporting that. Thank you.
Dr. Hamburger?
Yes.
I think I heard John Fidler say he had a question. Mr. Fidler?
Mr. Fidler? Are we hearing him at all?
Yes, I, yes, I do have some questions.
Mr. Fidler, go ahead.
I know there's, there's a delay. I don't know how long it is. Why don't I just ask the question and, uh, we'll see if it comes through. I heard some comments early, uh, okay, I heard some comments earlier about, uh, students who will be getting either new or different teachers. I'm trying, Dave. Uh, students who will have new or different teachers. And I, I'd like to know if the, uh, I'm gonna mute the, uh, sound and just go ahead and talk. Um, so I'd like to know from the administration if we're aware and how many students will if we're aware and how many students will be affected by this. The comments were very eloquent, but I'm concerned about students not getting the same teacher or getting a new teacher. And so I'd like to know if the administration, A, has a handle on the number of students who will be so affected, and B, what the plans are to deal with those students.
Because of the delay, so I can answer them.
Mr. Fidler, do you have any additional questions? Is that the extent of your questions?
Do you want to start to answer? I could text him.
So at the junior high and senior high, this wouldn't apply. But at the elementary schools and at Reifton, it would. So again, as we talked about lessons learned from other school districts and the experience that we're hearing from teachers in those districts as well as members of our staff who have children in those districts, the, what I've talked about at the junior high and the senior high in terms of having students in the classroom and then other students who are participating virtually, being spectators potentially if the teacher is solely focused on the kids in front of them in the classroom. At the junior high and senior high level, there's, you know, certainly a degree of advocacy and independence that we know that our students have in terms of managing that. At the elementary school, you know, we saw that students who, you know, saw their classmates doing work in the class, and then the amount of teacher demands for those students that are in the class in front of them, you know, behaviorally and from a learning standpoint, there seems to be more of a difficulty for the students who are participating via Zoom while their classmates are in the classroom. And even in my own family, my niece goes to a school where that's the case. She was, her parents had chosen for her to be virtual, and she was participating via Zoom while her classmates were physically present in the school in their hybrid model. And my mother, you know, as many of you alluded to, you know, family support, that sort of thing. My mother, you know, was home with her, trying to help her, but she would always be out of pace with what was happening in the classroom. So as we talked about a hybrid model that we wanted to employ at Exeter, putting instruction first and making sure that our students made maximal gains, we did not want to risk that our elementary students would be watching their peers in the classroom and either falling behind or moving ahead and really being out of sync, nor did we want our teachers to have the divided attention, especially in reading and math, that would be necessitated by having two groups of young students, one virtual and one in the classroom simultaneously. So in order to facilitate virtual teachers who will be solely focused on the virtual students in front of them and attentive to their needs, and in-person teachers who will be solely focused on the students in person with them and attentive to their needs, it necessitates making some shifts in the class rosters. And the extent of those shifts, to Mr. Fidler's point, we won't know until we know the number of parents specifically who wish to keep their children virtual and those who wish to send their students back in person. So for instance, if the 100% of first-grade parents at Lorraine wanted their students to come back and for in-person learning in the blended model, we wouldn't need to assign any first-grade teachers at Lorraine to a virtual classroom. At a Watten Creek, if 25% of the students in a second grade wanted their students to be virtual, we would need to assign a quarter of the teachers to the virtual environments. And at a school like Jacksonwald, where there's a smaller number of students and there was 25%, we may envision a situation where a teacher would teach the morning in the brick-and-mortar setting and the afternoon in the virtual setting. So in order to not have to hire additional staff, and some school districts have in fact hired 10, 12, 14, depending on the size of the school district, which fiscally is, you know, extremely problematic in terms of just the budget, you know, accounting for the salaries of, you know, potentially a dozen or more additional teachers. And even if the budget could sustain that, at this point, with the pandemic finding that number of available teachers, because there was a teacher shortage prior to the pandemic, that's been exacerbated by the pandemic in terms of older teachers not being willing to come in or substitute, and just, you know, a lack of teachers in general, we likely wouldn't even be able to find those if we could really afford and wish to hire, you know, a dozen extra teachers. So then whenever we get the numbers, we'll have to determine which teacher at a grade level would be the virtual teacher and whether or not they would teach a half-day or a full-day virtually. And then depending on that roster of that teacher who becomes virtual, those students who chose to stay virtual may in fact have their same teacher, they may have a different teacher, and the same with students in brick-and-mortar. So we do recognize that that is not desirable by any stretch to change a child's teacher. But we also recognize that in any given year, and I was an elementary principal for many, many years, you know, we have teachers who go out on maternity leave, we have teachers who go out on medical leaves, and in fact, the teacher changes and you have a long-term sub. And again, it's not ideal, you know, to Dr. Hoyt's point, from a social-emotional standpoint, we recognize the importance of relationships. But nonetheless, it's a necessity if we want to deliver the highest quality education to both our virtual and in-person learners that we redistribute some of our students. So we'll make the best attempt that we can to keep students with their teachers in those cases where we have to make a switch. Our guidance counselors and principals will work, you know, with students and families to make sure that that switch is as easy to make as possible. And in fact, we think the fact that in our asynchronous time, our students have been able to watch videos of other teachers in other classrooms, hopefully will ease that because they'll be more familiar than they typically would be with, you know, other teachers outside of their homeroom teacher. So we don't know the exact number to your question, Mr. Fidler, that will be impacted. We do have a plan to deal with the potential impacts. And we think both instructionally and fiscally, it's the most appropriate and responsible course to take moving forward.
He does want to ask more questions. What he wants to ask them himself?
Are there any further discussion from board members on this item?
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Minor. I'm just going to ask my other two questions, and you won't have this problem with the delay. The second question is, do we have a number of how many students have left the district?
Do you want to hear?
Whether it's to go to homeschooling, whether it's to go to cyber charter, or whether it's to go to private.
I'm not touching your mic. Can you hear me okay? All right. So I'll say again that I have a junior at the high school, although he's doing well with virtual learning. I am concerned with what's going on with Exeter right now in regards to the fact that we no longer have a movie theater, a bowling alley, we're losing playgrounds. I just worry about him as a whole in that regard. And I think it's important to offer our community a virtual, a full in-person option. With that. With that said, though, that is not being presented to me today. Today, I'm being presented with a hybrid model that I see as a step, a step that I appreciate, a step that my son will be taking. So I will be saying yes to that. But also with that said, if during this second quarter, we go from moderate to low, my hope is that we are immediately ready to give our schools an in-person full option at that point. I'm also hoping that if we get through this second quarter with minimal to low incidence, that prior to the third quarter, this board is presented with a full in-person option. That's my hope, whether we are moderate or not. I would really hope that at that third quarter, we are prepared to move forward because I think that's what our community needs. And that's it. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I really advocated to have this in-person meeting tonight because I felt really strongly that if we were asking our students and staff to come back to school, that we would be here too to make that decision. So I thank you all for coming out here tonight. In regards to the seven-through-12 model that's presented tonight, I understand why we have to choose this. And basically, it's the complexities of the high school and junior high scheduling that make the two-day-per-week split hybrid option that we're offering necessary. But regarding the elementary plan, as an elementary teacher myself, I believe that this five-day, half-day plan with small class sizes is a very strong model for keeping our students safe and for increasing student participation, sorry, student participation and achievement. I really believe that there's a tipping point of students per class size that when the class size reaches a certain size, the focus stops being on delivering the best education and becomes more about keeping students apart, assigning busy work, or just in general, trying to maintain and manage the classroom environment versus really focusing on that learning. So in saying that, I believe that we need this hybrid plan as a stepping stone, like Dr. Herring said, before we can consider a full return model because we need to prioritize right now our students' safety while focusing on their student achievement and success. Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Just to kind of give you guys an idea, there are a few of us, school board members that do have children in the school district, and some of them are struggling. My son is not doing the best at the virtual learning himself. He's a freshman here at the high school, so he's just getting used to this whole situation himself. My daughter just graduated last year. And my wife is a ICU nurse, so she deals with COVID every day. So it's in my, it's in my wheelhouse every single day that I deal in my household. What I'm going to say is, you know, we need to trust the science. We need to trust, hopefully GSK will come out with this virus, or some kind of vaccine to take care of it. But in the meantime, we need to be careful. This is a global, not just Exeter Township, not just Berks County, a global pandemic. Everybody in the world is handling this same thing. They have different scenarios. Some things are working, some things are not. What we have a problem here is, we don't know the data. I mean, yeah, we have schools that are full-time, full-open and everything, but they're not sharing the data. We don't know if they have COVID positive or not. We have no idea. If we were able to share that and have them some full disclosure on these things, we would feel better about these particular things. Unfortunately, that's not the case. Right now, we're basically throwing things at the wind, and hopefully it'll come out to be the way we want it to be. Look, I wish I didn't have to wear a mask every day. I wish I didn't have to go to the school to the giant and have to wear a mask every day. But I have to, to make sure you guys are safe and as well as me. Also, we have to think about it this way. Your kids are going to be in an environment where they can spread it to you. You can die from your kids. Think about that. Okay, I mean, that's. But I'm saying to you.
Okay, let's please, please, everyone, this is not the time for that. Public comment.
Okay, I understand that. But understand this.
Please.
Okay.
Can we, can we get back to the?
I'm just saying to you that we, that let's take some baby steps. Let's take one step at a time. This, we just can't open up.
Dr. Hamburger, can we call the meeting to order?
Okay, the comments, please, will stop from the community. This is an orderly, you've had your opportunity for your public comment. This is not an exchange system right now. Mr. Miller, do you want to conclude your comments?
So I just, I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to make, what I'm going to vote for is a hybrid model. If we ever get to the point where we are at a low level, we should definitely open back up the schools. We are not at that stage right now. We are not even close to that stage right now. I wish we can do what you guys want us to do, but it's not, it's not reality. It is not reality. It's not an excuse, it's science.
Let's stop, let's please stop.
Okay, fine. Science.
Call them, we're meeting to order. Mr. Miller? Is there anything else that you'd like to say directly to the board?
I'm going to vote for the hybrid model. And if we ever get to the point where we have the option of going full virtual, I mean, full school time, I would vote for that when it happens.
Thanks, Mr. Miller. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
We have Mr., we still have Mr. Fidler on the phone.
Yeah, well, I heard his questions. He would like to know, and I don't think you have that information now, but how many left the district to homeschooling and charter at the beginning of the year?
Could you put your mic on, Mr. Fidler?
Okay, I'm sorry. He would like to know how many, how many students left the district for homeschooling and to go to charter school since the beginning of the year. He'd also like to have a rundown on how many parents are choosing the virtual option, which I don't think he can answer that at this time, but hopefully for next meeting.
Yes, Mr. Fidler, we can, we can get to that information in terms of enrollments in cyber charters or parents who have submitted affidavits for homeschooling. And again, should the board vote to proceed with the hybrid model, we will be asking parents to make a commitment and then we'll be able to provide the board with that information later in the month.
Schools in Berks County are doing now, where they stand. Are they A, full virtual? Are they B, hybrid? Or C, are they all back in school? And it would just be helpful as we consider this vote to know what the others are doing. Thank you.
Mr. Fidler, that is fluid. As you can imagine, there are boards that are meeting this week and considering plans, especially as we go into the second quarter. So I'll give you the best information I have, although I cannot guarantee its accuracy because we meet as a superintendent group weekly. And I didn't have that question in advance in terms of surveying the schools. To the best of my knowledge, there are three districts in the county that have gone with a full open, Twin Valley, which straddles Chester County as well, Hamburg, and Ole Valley. There are other districts that have maintained a full virtual and I believe intend to do so, Mullenberg, Antietam, and Redding, and I'm not sure if there are others. And then to the best, again, of my knowledge, the remainder are in some kind of a hybrid or moving to some kind of a hybrid. But again, I, you know, I don't feel 100% positive, but that, that is, you know, the most recent information I have, and I believe it's accurate. But again, I would prefer to double-check with the IU to know for sure.
Have we addressed all of Mr. Fidler's questions and opportunities to comment?
Dr. Hamburger, I have, if I can get a little sort of bureaucratic here for a second. So the, could somebody please explain the, for the benefit of our audience, both online and here, what is the emergency instructional time template for Section 520-1? And then once we do that, I'd like to address an issue in the 1949 Act 14 PA Assembly General School Code. School Code.
So the emergency instructional time template, Section 520.1, is in fact what the board is voting on this evening. The Pennsylvania Department of Education enforces the legislation that requires school districts in Pennsylvania to have school for 180 days, as well as 900 hours at the elementary level, 990 hours at the secondary level. Since the COVID-19 pandemic, prior to that, all school districts achieved their 999 hours as well as their 180 days in the conventional way that we've run schools. Since the pandemic, the Department of Education has allowed three different instructional models to meet those requirements. Those models are a full-virtual model, a full-in-person model, or a half, excuse me, or a blended, or what's known as a hybrid model. So school districts have to submit to the Pennsylvania Department of Education this instructional time template that says to the Department of Education what model they will be employing in order to meet their 180-day, 990-hour requirement. And so the board had previously voted on an instructional time template that was for 100% virtual learning. The new template that I am asking the board to approve this evening is a template that has 100% virtual learning for all students, continuing through October 30th, and then whenever the county is categorized as having substantial transmission levels by the Pennsylvania Department of Health, or as an emergency measure in response to COVID-19 in the school community. And then on November 2nd, and as long as the district maintains transmission in the moderate level, a blended learning, which is half-day in-person and half-day virtual at the elementary, and then two days in-person and three days virtual at the secondary level, or a full-virtual option for parents who wish to proceed with that. So that, those would be the models that we would be assuring the Department of Education that we would be meeting our legal requirement for the number of school days and the number of hours.
Thank you. So, so the question that I have has to do with specifications around, once the school opens on November 3rd, there will be incidences. There may not be outbreaks. And a couple of, in reading this, it talks about the school community. What do we understand the school community to be?
Mr. Japina, do you mean within the context of the instructional template itself?
Under Appendix A, there's a question that, there's a comment that ends emergency measure in response to COVID-19 in school community. What is the metric that we're using to define school community?
So there's a couple of different scenarios that one could envision. So in a scenario where the Department of Health, so if we had COVID cases either among staff or among students, we would contact the line that the state has set up specifically for schools. It's called the Rapid Response Hotline. So two people from each school district are allowed to call that Rapid Response Hotline. In our district, it is me, and then I've designated Mrs. Harris, our People Services Director, as the other person. So in the event that we had cases in the school, we would contact that number, and they would eventually connect us with the epidemiological team in Harrisburg. If that team would say that a classroom, a bus route, a grade level, or a building would need to close, that would obviously be an emergency situation, and for the period of time of that closure, that school, building, or grade level, or bus route would, you know, return to virtual learning during that period of time. So that would be one emergency scenario. Another emergency scenario could be that the Pennsylvania Department of Health would declare an emergency within the county or within the township, and, you know, issue a statement that schools would have to return to virtual learning, much as they did in March, in which case we would have virtual learning happen. And then, you know, the final piece is contained within the substantial transmission levels, which would be, again, based on Department of Health statistics. So the emergency measure in the school community envisions both a within-building potential emergency in terms of an outbreak within a particular building, or a larger outbreak, either within the township or the county, at which time the Department of Health or the epidemiological team would direct us that we in fact had a COVID emergency and would need to revert to virtual learning.
Thank you. So in Section 520-1, Item B, Number 1, "Subject to the foregoing provisions, any board of school directors may..." So the operative words there are "any board of school directors." How are those decisions going to be made based on the input either from DOH or some other entity?
I'm sorry, Mr. Japina, I'm trying to find the part that you're referencing in the document. Could you repeat where that was located? Did you say Item 1B?
It's not in the document per se. It's under the 1949 Act 14. It's Section 520-1, Item B, Number 1. I guess what I'm trying to get at is, what would, I mean, you've explained to me that, or you've explained to the board that you could go from a potential locale being shut down, so, you know, just a bus route with those affected students. It could be, you know, a classroom or a lunchroom. What I'm, what I'm trying to understand is, who makes that decision? You know, and again, I'd like to understand, and maybe DOH does this, but I'd like to understand also incidence versus outbreak, because I think there's, you know, there's a significant difference between both of those. And then I'd also like to know, relative to the Rapid Response Hotline from the Department of Health, have we called that, and how rapid has it been?
Okay. So there's a couple of items there. So a Department of Health at the county level has the jurisdiction to close anything that they choose to close. In Berks County, we do not have a county Department of Health, so we rely on the State Department of Health. So the State Department of Health has, in fact, latitude to close any building or institution that they deem to be a health threat. So in the event that the Department of Health would order the closure of any one of our buildings, or all of our buildings, or all of the buildings in the county, or all of the buildings in the state, we're an arm, you know, of the government, and even if we weren't, even if we were a private industry that was under the supervision of the Department of Health, such as a restaurant, you know, we would have to close on their order. So that's part one. The second part is that on, the Board adopted Resolution 2020-03 on July 21st, 2020, that stated that during the course of the pandemic emergency, which we are still in, we're in a declared emergency state in Pennsylvania, the superintendent has the authority to make decisions to implement various instructional schedules set forth in this appendix as needed. So if I, again, we had some sort of an outbreak, and the Rapid Response Team, the Epidemiological Team, told me that the appropriate course of action to protect the safety of our students and staff was to close a classroom, a building, et cetera, then I have the authority granted to me by the school board to execute that determination made by those medical experts based, you know, on their understanding of our situation and the appropriateness of a closure or some kind of a quarantine to protect students and staff in our community at large. There was a second part of what you asked, Mr. Japina, I apologize. It escaped me.
I believe it was regarding the contact with the Department of Health and how rapid was the Rapid Response.
Oh, the Rapid Response Team. So as you know, early in the year, Exeter was the first district in the county to encounter a COVID positive through our athletics in the summer. And at that point, we just made a report, and I received no contact back whatsoever from the Department of Health, or nor did I receive any directives about what to do. As the summer proceeded and more schools had the same situation, as athletics continued, there was an outcry among school districts and the organizations that represent us that we were in fact getting no communication from the Department of Health. And it was one of my concerns, as we faced the opening of the school year, the fact that Department of Health had no mechanism to communicate back and forth with school districts. So in light of that, they implemented the Rapid Response Hotline, which I mentioned to you previously. Since that time, I have called the Rapid Response Hotline twice, once for an incident with students and once participating in sporting events, and once for incidents with staff. In both cases, when I called, my call was immediately answered by the person at the intermediate unit who took all of my information, and within three hours, I had received a call, actually multiple calls, back from Harrisburg with the Epidemiological Team's recommendation on how to proceed. So I, you know, I would say, you know, with an N size of two, in terms of my experiences, that has greatly improved in terms of their response to school superintendents when they call.
Dr. Minor, when we approved this in July, our first version, we, didn't we approve a full return with virtual option as our first option?
Yes. This form has actually been approved, this would be the third time, right? So the first time was for a full opening when we adopted our health and safety plan. The second time was for the full virtual option, when the conditions in the county had deteriorated sufficiently that we no longer, as a pandemic task force, felt that we were able to open safely. And then this would be the third time that the board has approved this time document, should they approve it this evening.
But shouldn't it still have that option that we voted on in July in here as one of our options?
Which is what, Mrs. Wilson?
What we voted on in July, which was a full return with a virtual option.
So, so it theoretically could have that, Mrs. Wilson, but the, in conversations with the board members, in fact, the fact that we approved this resolution, other school districts, you know, have not necessitated this type of board vote because superintendents, and the vast majority of school districts in Pennsylvania, in fact, granted this authority via this resolution so that their superintendents could change their option. Our school board, you know, has made it clear to me as their superintendent that when we are moving to change our modality in some substantial way, that they wish to receive, you know, comments from the community and deliberate as a board and vote on it again. And so, short of an emergency, it would be my intention to come back to the board with a change of plans, have the board hear, public comment, deliberate, and then approve it. So in the event, for instance, as Dr. Herring described, or Mr. Miller referenced, that our community transmission would move to low and stay there for a two-week period at minimum, which is what the Department of Health and Department of Education recommend, and we wish to come back to the board and ask for a full in-person return. It's my understanding from the board that they wish to hear public comment, deliberate, and then in fact approve that. Otherwise, it would be conceivable that I could write an Appendix A that imagined all potential return options, and the board would approve it one time, and then I would move between them as I saw fit. But I believe that our board wishes to take a more active governance role in those decisions. If I'm incorrect, certainly we could develop an Appendix A that imagined all things, but I believe that the board wants to be actively engaged in that conversation.
Yeah, I do, I mean, I do think that we want to be actively engaged, but as representatives of the community, not as individuals, but as representatives of the community.
May I ask, if we go into the third quarter and the governor keeps us at moderate, will you still be giving the board an option to change where we're at or present that to the board?
I don't know that I can speculate nine weeks out, Dr. Herring, in terms of, you know, if we're still in moderate. If we're still in moderate and the Department of Health and the Department of Education state that it's unsafe for schools to open in a full-in-person model, given that, then I would be hesitant to recommend to the board that that is in fact the course that we go down. The board is always able to make their own motion in that regard, and so the board could certainly do that at the beginning of the third quarter if they saw fit. But it is my intention as superintendent to use the best information that I have, which is the Department of Health and Department of Education's joint recommendation on when schools can be opened safely and present that to the board. So I'm not comfortable at this point saying with any certainty if we maintained a moderate level of transmission that I would change my recommendation. I certainly would if we entered a low and sustained low level of transmission, because I do believe that changes the dynamics and the potential dangers associated with them. But again, you know, the board could certainly, you know, direct me to present them with something at the third quarter, and, you know, and we could proceed however that played out at that time in the third quarter. The other possibility that I think we all have to envision is that between now and the third quarter, the state could change their metrics relative to what low, moderate, and substantial means, as they did with red, yellow, and green. If you remember back in July, they were talking about red, yellow, and green. Now they're talking about low, moderate, and substantial. So I think that as the state learns more about the virus, how it's transmitted through schools, they've also changed their metrics. So again, I think predicting what will happen, I guess at this point it would be 10 or 11 weeks out, would be premature, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't be comfortable making an assertion that way at this point.
But as a board, we are able to ask you to present that then? I just want to, okay, we...
Yeah, as a board, you can ask me to do whatever you want. Yep.
So, Dr. Minor, just a quick question. So right now, we're not going based on Exeter Township's data. We go based on the whole Berks County as a whole. So if we are kind of doing okay here in Exeter Township, and let's say Mullenberg is doing horrible, or the other township, like Daniel Boone is doing not as well, is there a way we can determine and say, hey, you know, since we're a little in better shape than those other townships are, can we say like, you know, that's why we probably would want to have that individual provoke, to see if there's any type of, but there's no real data in terms of finding that out. Is that correct?
So, so, Mr. Miller, it's, right now, the way that the Department of Education and the Department of Health report low, moderate, and substantial is at the county level. They don't report it at a school district level. They're, one of the metrics that they consider, for instance, is a positivity rate, and they look at a positivity rate between 5% and 10% as being in the moderate range, and below 5% as being in the low range. And right now, Berks County is right hovering in that 5% range. They do also report positivity by ZIP code. And so the last time I looked, which was a couple of days ago, the 19606, I believe that's Exeter's ZIP code, was reporting a positivity rate above 9%. What's challenging about the ZIP code positivity is, again, you don't know what accounts for that. You could imagine a single party, you know, causing a large number of cases within a ZIP code or a community, you know, within a county. The number of nursing homes, you know, for instance, can throw that number off in the event that there would be an outbreak in a nursing home. So at this point, in terms of what the Department of Health and the Department of Education offer us, it is at the county level, there are, there is positivity rate data at the ZIP code level as well, but that, that's not what districts are being asked to use by the Department of Health and the Department of Education. But again, we could envision that that might change as they get at a more granular level. As you remember, in March, you know, the entire state was shut down, you know, at one time in all schools, and, you know, school districts and... and, you know, school districts in, for instance, Potter County, Tioga County, were really up in arms because they had no cases in those counties. And so then the state recognized that they needed to do it at a county level. Between now and January, will they recognize that they need to do it at a ZIP code level or a school district level? They may. Hard to say at this point, but for right now, they're doing it at the county level.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you say that what we're voting on then tonight overrides what we voted on in August?
So Mrs. Wilson, what we are voting on tonight, again, we've had two previous votes. So the vote in August was a swap-out, basically. These go to PDE and they put them in, you know, and I don't know that there's like a literal filing cabinet, but they file these as Exeter Township's school districts plan to achieve the 180 days and the 990 hours. So when we submitted in July, that was our standing Appendix A. When we submitted in August, I imagine they replaced that Appendix A with the August Appendix A. And now when we submit this Appendix A, they'll replace the August Appendix A with this one in the event that the board votes to approve this plan this evening.
Okay. I just, I really want the board to be aware that in July and in August, we voted for 100% in-person learning with a 100% virtual option for students, and we're replacing that right now. Those were the two options that we presented in July and August.
So, don't cheer. It's just that we need to have all options on the table. So Mrs. Wilson, I think the difference here is that, you know, we were seeking to put the blended model into the mix. Arguably, being in-person is the default option for schools to meet their 180 days and their 990 hours. So having virtual or having blended is actually the distinction that would set us apart from having full in-person. Not having that on the Appendix A wouldn't preclude us from having full in-person, because full in-person is the standard mode of operation for school districts.
Yeah, translate English. Come on.
Mrs. Wilson, did you not understand what I just said to you?
Please.
No, I understood what you meant.
Thank you.
But I just wanted, you know, the board to recognize that that was on our last plan and it's not, all the options aren't listed this time.
Again, Mrs. Wilson, the reason for not putting that on this, again, it is the mode in which schools typically operate is that in-person, so it's not 100% necessary in order to do that. And furthermore, given the level of community interest and the desire of the board to be, again, my interpretation of the desire of the board to be clear with the community, I felt like that listing that at this point in time may lead to confusion as to what the school was approving for the second quarter versus moving to that in the third quarter. Again, it doesn't preclude us from moving to that at any point in time. But again, I didn't want to cause any confusion about what it was that we were moving forward with nor what it was that the board was voting on, because if you can imagine if I listed all of the possible options, then how would you know what it was that we were going to do in the second quarter?
Any further discussion among board members? Mr. Japina?
Just a question. We are three weeks from November 3rd, so are we confident that our students and families at every grade level have a degree of certainty as to what they need to do between now and then if we go back so that there's no confusion? I know I've asked repeatedly to make sure that we communicate to everybody equally because, you know, people get information in different ways. So I just want to make sure that if the board's decision is to move forward, that there's a plan that is inclusive to everybody in terms of the steps they need to take over the next three weeks to make a decision and then go where they need to go.
Yes, so Mr. Japina, in the event that this was approved this evening, our principals would reach out to families at the individual student level as early as tomorrow about the options that are on the table for them. And then any family, obviously, that they didn't hear from, they would make a direct reach out, you know, via phone to ensure that those families knew what the models were that were available as of November 2nd. So that would be an individual family communication beyond our general posting on our website, our parent link, and our Facebook page, so that will be coming directly from the building principals to each individual child's family. And then in the event that they didn't hear back, they would make a follow-up, you know, phone call or other contact to that family.
Okay, thank you. So if I can, I'm sorry, just step back for a second. So Allison, relative to your point that you were making, the proposal that the motion refers to does not preclude us from making a decision to, again, all the stars are aligning in the third quarter, it does not prevent us from coming back with a full five-day in-school option. It's not listed in here, but this document is only going to serve us for this quarter. Is that correct?
Well, until we re-vote or we put a new version forward.
Yes, Mrs. Wilson is correct. The document itself doesn't have an end date ever when you vote on it. It's not, you're basically telling PDE that you will in fact meet the 180-day requirement. So the way the document is written, it talks about, you know, during a period of time that we're moderate. But again, we can re-approve this Appendix A at every board meeting if we wished or weekly. There's no limitation to how often you can resubmit this appendix to the Department of Education. It's simply that the school district is required, because the 180-day period, you know, number of days is required by law. It was waived last school year when all schools were closed, but the legislature has made it clear that they will not be waiving it for this school year. So we have to keep reassuring PDE that we will not have school for 180 days. In addition, I would draw the board's attention to, you know, that we are making other guarantees in the document, you know, in item three, you know, for instance, that ESL students will have, you know, all of their rights guaranteed, et cetera. So this is basically an affirmation document to the Department of Education saying that the school district will not have fewer than 180 days or 990 hours and expressing to PDE how we'll go about obtaining those hours. But we can resubmit it whenever we wish, however often we wish to do so.
Dr. Minor, can I just ask maybe a clarifying question to what you kind of just alluded to, I think, which is that if the board decided whether that would be in a 5-4 majority or anything above that, to go fully in-person, that would in effect direct you as the superintendent to change that form, submit it to PDE, and that would be fulfilling this legal requirement here that we're doing this evening to return to fully in-person. Is that correct?
You know, Mr. Ehrens, I would actually have to defer to our solicitor in terms of the, in fact, necessity of resubmitting the form, again, as I was addressing with Mrs. Wilson, because the default mode that schools operate in is an in-person model, right? Like, prior to this year, nobody ever submitted this form. So I don't, in fact, know the legal necessity of an Appendix A if that is the choice versus expressing to the Department of Education. So just as a point of clarity, you might remember, and I wasn't here, you know, Dr. Phillips would have been here, but the schools were given an option to submit an application to the Department of Education so that they would never have to have a snow day, right? So that we could have, you know, virtual learning on snow days and then we would never have to adjust the calendar for snow days. The only district that I'm aware of in Berks County that in fact submitted that plan was Conrad Weiser. So technically, they were the only district that would have been allowed to engage in a full virtual or other type of model, because they were the only ones who had submitted it prior to the pandemic. None of us envisioned that. We envisioned snow days. So this form basically allows schools, having not gone through that application, to have other models that allow them to acquire their 180 days. So again, that's why I'm not entirely certain that you would need an Appendix A document for what is, you know, the default mode in which schools operate. So I don't know if Mr. Katz, you know, with the delay, is able to answer that or if you would like him to answer that now or at another time. I don't know the legal answer.
Let's hold on that, and maybe I can cut to the chase with this question. So in effect, if we vote tonight to go to a hybrid model, there is nothing that prevents us from, at our next available voting meeting, changing to going fully in-person, either by fulfilling this requirement to fill out a new form or not having to under the law. Would that be fair?
Yes, the board could make a determination to, like I said, change to any of the models at any time. They're within their ability to do that.
In effect, the real difference, as I see it, from the resolution that we passed in July is that the board has to make the affirmative decision to change the modality of education. Otherwise, in that resolution, I think part of it enabled you as the superintendent to do that. So in reality...
That's correct. The resolution actually did give me the authority to do that. So right, you're absolutely right. In this case, for the point of clarity, for community input, for board deliberation, and for, you know, board oversight in terms of changing to a hybrid model, hybrid model was not on either the July or the August plan. So, you know, this is an opportunity for the board to in fact sanction the hybrid model. For instance, one of the implications of the hybrid model that I think bears the board's consideration of is the addition of midday transportation, right? So midday transportation isn't something that the board normally provides, and so there's associated, you know, costs with that. So that's why I think it's important for the board to actually make an affirmative vote, because there's implications, you know, beyond, you know, the student day, the number of students, for instance, in a class size. All of those things will be different in this model than would typically be the case. So that's why, you know, I believe, and again, I believe that the board wishes to in fact have input on it.
So then my suggestion would be, and I'm not making a motion here, because kind of can't by Robert's rules of orders, then my suggestion would really be, let's have the vote this evening. The outcome of that is likely to be that we'll have a hybrid instruction plan and, as probably the board would direct to try and get some clarity around the legal question. And I think it'd probably be appropriate at some time in the future to begin preparing a plan for fully in-person, so it's ready to take off the shelf and we're ready to go whenever that time comes.
So Mr. Ehrens, just as a point of clarification, we in fact have that plan in the health and safety plan that we submitted in July.
So marvelous. There's nothing much more that we need to do until those numbers come down where a majority of the board feels that we can go into a fully in-person model.
That's correct.
Dr. Minor, just a point of clarification too, and just in communicating with Mr. Katz, it seems as if, you know, the notification to PDE is only required in the event that the district is not engaged in a full in-person model. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
Yeah, so the only time we actually submit the plan is when we have something that deviates from a full in-person model.
Correct, because that's the standard operating modality for school districts.
So when we offer virtual, does that deviate from the plan?
We are, there's, in the plan, there are two specific incidents whereby virtual is considered. One is in the event that parents elected as an option, or two is if we move into a level of substantial transmission or there is an emergency declared at either a building school or other level by the Department of Health.
I understand that, but if we would go back, if we would go back and we still would offer a virtual option, that still would have to have a new...
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, Mrs. Wilson, I misunderstood you. You're correct, yes. So if we would go back, if we were to go back and not offer a virtual option, which I, again, I could be incorrect, but I believe that's in fact what Ole did, is not offer a virtual option, again, I'm not positive about that, then it would require no documentation whatsoever. If we were going to go full in-person and provide parents with a virtual option to obtain the 180 days, then in fact, we would have to submit another Appendix A. You're correct.
So I really don't want to take us down a rabbit hole, but based on what Dr. Hamburger just said relative to advice from the attorney, I'm going to ask us to take a look at this motion again, because the motion is recommending that this is a submission to the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and I believe our attorney just advised us that this doesn't have to be submitted.
No, it does have to be submitted. It doesn't have to be submitted in the event that we're full in-person.
Okay, so you're saying if we go back to full in-person, it does not have to be submitted because that's our standing operating?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
But to move to this stage that we're contemplating would require submission? Yeah.
Do you want to call the vote, please?
We have a call for the vote. So at this time, we're going to vote, and we're going to be voting on item 4A, Emergency Instructional Time Schedule. I'm going to ask Mr. Feig to ask for a roll call. Vote, please.
Hunter Ehrens?
Aye.
John Fidler? Dr. Ann Herring?
Yes.
Dr. David Hamburger?
Yes.
Michael Japina?
Yes.
Dr. Sharon McLendon?
Yes.
Buri Miller?
Yes.
Michelle Stratton?
Mrs. Stratton, are you able to vote?
Yes.
Allison Wilson?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Motion carries. Thanks, thanks board members. Okay, we're going to move on to item five in our agenda. It's Curriculum Programs and Curriculum Committee. Dr. McLendon?
Dr. Hamburger, I'm sorry. Are we going to be going for how much longer, may I ask? For just this part and then we're done for the day?
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you well.
Then we have a workshop. When will we be taking a break? May I ask? I'm sorry if I'm being rude.
I think...
We're going to take a break at the end of this agenda.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Dr. McLendon?
It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve a three-day leveled literacy intervention training by Heinemann for 30 district educators in the amount of $9,000 on October 20th, October 21st, and the third day later in the year yet to be determined. The first two days of training will be virtual.
Second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Mrs. Stratton? I think we heard from Mr. Fidler. Mrs. Stratton?
Hi.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, nine, zero.
I said aye.
That concludes our formal agenda. We're prepared for adjournment. At this time, I will accept a motion for the adjournment. You have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. We will be adjourned for 10 minutes and then we'll be moving into our next meeting, which is our October board workshop meeting. Thank you. Do we have John and Michelle on the meeting? Can, Mr. Way, can we be sure that we have our other board members present for the start of the meeting? Are they ready to go? They're good to go? Okay. All right, folks, let's start the Exeter Township School District Board Meeting Workshop. And we're going to resume our discussions. Just want to remind folks that this is an opportunity for us to review the agenda that will be presented to the board next Tuesday at our former board voting meeting in October. So we have more of an opportunity for discussion. Seeing that most of our administrative team is gone, we do have our central office team still present, so, you know, hopefully you folks will be able to kind of respond to any questions that may come up. We're going to start out with public comments. Is there anything, anyone from the public here that would like to make any comments to the board? Anything on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we're just going to run through the agenda and-
I'm here, Dave.
Thanks, John.
I'm here, John, they just got started.
We're starting the meeting now.
Yeah.
Okay. We have once, two sets of meeting minutes that we'll be approving next week, a board workshop meeting and a board voting meeting. Item four is board policy. We have two policies and Dawn, why don't you grab the mic and kind of familiarize us with the two policies that we'll be considering revisions to. Those would be one policy on electric devices and the other policy, 815.2, which is the new policy, which is live stream video.
Thank you. Hi, I'm in person, everybody. I think this is the first time that I've actually met someone in person.
Is your mic working? Is it turned on?
I don't think now it is. Thank you, Jo. So hi in person.
You're good.
So, yeah, we have two policies on the board agenda for tonight.
Joe has left the conference.
The one is a live stream policy that a lot of districts have put in place as a result of the situation with the pandemic and moving to some type of virtual instruction. PSBA doesn't actually have a model policy for that, so what they've been sharing out with districts is samples from districts who already put together their own policies. And so that's what we utilize to build ours. Joe Way and the IT team took a look at the samples and crafted ours based off of those. So essentially, it just outlines the parameters around the use of live streaming, both teacher-initiated use and student-initiated use as well. You have me on a timer too, Joe. And then the other policy is for electronic devices and the main purpose in having that up for revision is just to update language related to newer devices that are considered electronic devices.
Are there any questions relative to those two new policies that'll be subjected to first reading next Tuesday? If in the meantime you have any comments, direct them to Donna Napoli in the Administration Building and we will have those two on the agenda. Thanks, Dawn, for that.
Thanks.
On page two of the agenda, we do have policies for second reading. These are policies we've already had an opportunity to discuss and review to some degree. Immunization and communicable diseases, school wellness, hazing, and facilities and workplace safety. Are there any question or discussions relative to those policies? If not, seeing none, we'll move on to personnel with Mrs. Wilson.
We will be voting on the resignation of support staff, or the retirement of support staff, and the resignations of three support staff, and the appointments of a guest teacher, the change of status. Is there anybody listed under change of status? Oh, yes. Professional staff and then our support staff, it's all there, in regards to our furloughs. Is that all of the recalls due to-
No, just, Dr. Holler, do you want to speak to which recalls are listed on this? I believe these are the people who actually had recalls prior to November 2nd and that the remaining staff members, now that the board has voted, would be on the next agenda for the voting meeting next week. Is that correct, Dr. Holler?
That's correct. The recalls that are on here tonight are recalls that were done previous when we returned and we needed additional support. You'll also notice there are some staff members who decided to take an early furlough. Next week, you'll see that there'll be the recalls in preparation for school starting in November.
All right, and we'll also be voting on leaves of absences and course requests and conference requests.
Any questions in regard to personnel? Okay, we're going to move into student functions. And Dr. Herring, are you covering for Mrs. Strat?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
We'll be putting forward for approval, early graduation requests, tuition agreement with Kids Peace, Ole Valley School District tuition payment, amended agreement with New School, agreement with Berks County Intermediate Unit, and field trips. And I do have a question regarding that field trip. It is in regards to a trip the senior high marching band will travel to Elversen next Wednesday. Can she wait until Tuesday to get the approval for Wednesday?
Oh, so, Dr. Herring, typically we would not do that. She, I was actually approached about the parade earlier in the year and, you know, we hadn't had a lot of evidence about the ability of the band to distance and those sorts of things. And so I wasn't comfortable granting my approval. I was reapproached by Mr. Campbell last week and given the success that the band has been able to exhibit in terms of their performance, I did grant it. So it was a late grant on my part, so that's the reason that it's coming up this evening.
Just want to also recognize that that's a report and not an approval. So we won't be taking any action on that next week. We're just being notified. Anything else under student functions? Any other questions for-
Just a quick question then. So in our health and safety plan, did it discuss field trips?
So this is not a typical field trip. So in the health and safety plan, we're talking specifically about academic field trips. This item, I would say, is more akin to the football team going to another location and playing. So it's the opportunity for the band, which has limited opportunity this year, given all the COVID restrictions, to actually perform, to have another performance opportunity, much like our sports teams have had.
I understand. And if I can add, Mrs. Sulkey has done a phenomenal job with the band in keeping everyone safe. I believe you've been to one of her sessions here where when kids check in, she's right on it. And it's been, it's been great having my kid in that program, knowing he's been safe through that.
Yes, she has done a phenomenal job.
Any other, any other discussions? Okay, we're going to move on to Curriculum Committee, Dr. McLendon.
Hey, we'll be voting to approve a third-party contract agreement between Exeter Township School District and Berks County Intermediate Unit to provide in-person or virtual medial reading instructional services in accordance with the Title I Reading Program for Exeter non-public students for the period August 1st, 2020 through June 15th, 2021, at a cost of And that contract agreement is attached. And B is a recognition for teachers in the park. Exeter Township School District sincerely thanks and appreciates teachers in the parks for funding the purchase of books in the amount of $8,000 to support the reading of our Title I students in grades one through five at Jackson Walden and Lorraine Elementary Schools and at Reifton School. and at Reifton School. This initial $8,000 purchase generated scholastic points for the district, which enabled the ordering of additional books to support our non-Title I students at a Watten Creek Elementary School and elsewhere. Thank you. Tips?
I can't hear what she said.
She's asking if the recognition will be at the voting meeting, or are we recognizing that?
No, it'll be, this is what's going to be on the agenda.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. McLendon. Final item on the agenda has to do with the Exeter Community Education Foundation. I'll turn it over to Dr. Herring.
Exeter Township School District sincerely thanks and appreciates the Exeter Community Education Foundation for funding the following district items. $3,000 for Wi-Fi service for families in need. $8,395.20 for learning ally building licenses at all six schools. And $1,816.96 for unique learning system low-incidence teacher licenses. ECEF is also working towards funding additional mobile hotspots for families as well as overdrive for K through six libraries. Thank you, ECEF. I have a question. So they're looking to do more, get more Wi-Fi. Do all of our children have access to Wi-Fi? Do we know that?
Dr. McLendon, yes. Our tech department has been working incredibly hard throughout the summer and continue to do so now to both ensure that our students have the devices that they need, to make sure our district is is running, as well as that students have access to Internet. As time goes on, we're discovering different needs. For instance, I know that Mr. Way recently, you know, worked with a daycare that was struggling because of the number of students who were trying to access Wi-Fi simultaneously and went out there and provided them with hotspots. So we want to just make sure that we have mobile hotspots that are always available and can be deployed as people's situations change and they may lose Internet service, et cetera. We want to be at the ready to provide new service should they need it. So we really want to thank ECEF both for that and for all of the other amazing things that they have helped to support and fund during the pandemic and always. We're so happy to have them as a partner.
Like I heard one of the parents that spoke tonight, she said about her, I believe it was her son, you know, or a couple of them mentioned about not being able to get on or getting dropped. Are we... Are those parents letting, letting you or letting someone know that they're having trouble?
So we have a technology hotline, so Mr. Way's team fields, you know, calls throughout the day. They've gone out to people's homes and helped them with situations. People have come to the school district. So as long as, you know, a parent contacts us via phone and lets us know that they have a concern, our tech team has done a phenomenal job with being on top of that. You know, obviously, I don't, I can't speak to whether or not, in fact, everybody has contacted us, but anybody who has contacted us, the tech team has been working really hard to man the phones and to get out and provide the service that individuals need. So whenever we become aware, if a parent, you know, emails me or contacts me with a concern, I always make sure that I put them in touch, you know, with Mr. Way and his team.
Can I, can I add though in regards to what you had asked? I think almost every single day throughout my son's learning online, it just drops, it freezes. It just is something he's used to at this point. And they have given him advice in regards to just rebooting and getting back on, but it's, it happens all the time. I don't even know if that's something that can be helped because of just how much is being weighed down on school and the Internet.
Okay, any, any other discussion related to the Ed Foundation?
No, no further discussion with that, Dr. Hamburger. Before you call for adjournment, I'd like to mention an item. I do, we want to just bring to the board's attention again, the furlough recalls would be added to personnel next week, and also the administrative restructuring plan that's been discussed prior in executive session would be added to the agenda next week, including a contract for Dr. Holler, the move of Kristi Kobel, the move of Andy Wallach, and the remainder of that plan. So it doesn't appear on the workshop agenda, but was previously discussed in executive session with the board.
Folks have any questions regarding those two items?
I do have a question. Are we going to have our executive session here?
So yeah, I'll work with Mr. Campbell on identifying a space within the high school so we don't have to move locations for those meetings.
Mr. H, Mr. Ernst?
I just want to share with the board that the Business Functions Committee is going to have a meeting on the 20th of October here at the building. In my mind, it would make sense to do it in the LGI, but I think probably consistent with what Kim just talked about and working with Dr. Campbell or Mr. Campbell to identify a space, and then we'll send that out to everybody ahead of time. The singular item on that agenda is going to be the consideration of a the opt-out resolution for the tax levy for 2021, 2022. I apologize, my brain's white-fried right now. So that, that meeting will start at 5:15 and it shouldn't last up until 6 o'clock, but it is going to be singular topic and we'll try to move through it pretty quick.
Thanks, Mr. Ernst.
Dave, I'd just like to extend my thanks to both the administration that's here tonight, to the staff that assisted with this meeting here, and to Exeter Police for their support this evening. Thank you.
Agreed. But before we adjourn, are there any other board members who would seek to be heard at this time?
Once again, I want to echo what Mike Japina just said. I think, I think you guys did a good job even with the social distancing, everything. This is excellent on how this is, and hopefully this won't be the new normal, but at least we can, at least we know we can do this. This is good. All right. Thank you.
Okay, unless there are any objections, we will adjourn the meeting and see you folks all next week on Tuesday. Have a great night.